We'd like to welcome everyone to Planning and Zoning Commission this evening, especially those of you who have made the effort to come personally and take part in this meeting tonight, and welcome those who will be watching this later on television. We would like to recognize that our chairman, Jesse Carden, is not here tonight. He had a conflict with this meeting that has been there for a long time, and he's otherwise engaged tonight and won't be here, as well as Todd Mitchell, who is another of our commissioners. He is not available to be here with us this evening either. This evening I have asked Michelle Carroll to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business is our minutes from our last meeting from Jan. 5, 2022. So I would entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the minutes from our Jan. 5, 2022 meeting. I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our next item on our agenda is a preliminary plat proposal. And we'll have Brandon. What's that?
I was just gonna see if you wanted to mention, we did have a previously noticed item that was going to be on the agenda that was requested to be continued.
Yes.
Just as far as housekeeping.
Why don't you go ahead and do that while you're there at the microphone?
Thank you. We've previously noticed a Modera is the name of the project. It's north of the Revere Health, over by the Benjamin interchange. The applicant was still trying to gather some information and details for the review by the planning commission, and he was unable to get those to us in time. So he did request that that item be removed from the agenda. It had already been noticed, and so we did just want to make that announcement in case anybody's here to speak to that item.
And it will be re-noticed again.
It will be re-noticed, and we're hoping potentially for the March planning commission it would be ready for your review.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks, Brandon. Now to the item in front of us this evening, 36 Industrial.
Thank you. If we can go to the next slide, Mike. So on the far right, you see just barely the edge of the runway. So this is northwest of our Spanish Fork Airport. It's at the northern boundary of the city limits. It's a pretty straightforward plat. I apologize that we've got to kind of split over two pages here, but it's three lots, rather large lots, and they're industrially zoned. And the applicant is requesting this preliminary plat approval to split approximately 90 acres into the three lot configuration that you see before you. This did go to the DRC and where it's out on the edge of town, and there's a lot of improvements that are lacking, hence the list of conditions that you see as far as utilities and what that will need to be provided to serve lots. The good thing is you can see on the edge of the screen here, this is a project that's going in. If you haven't been out to this part of town recently, I recommend it. There's a lot of activity and projects getting underway. But as you can see, this site would be doing a lot of the improvements in the area, and then this site would be extending those as well. And so the DRC just wanted to make sure that those items were addressed, whether it be with the final plat or with the site plan.
Could you just point out the other points that are easily, you know, we've got the edge of the runway there and...
Yeah, edge of the runway is here.
And the highway.
This is the state highway right here that connects out to Springville's 400 South interchange. Our main street is just off to the right.
Very good. Is the applicant here tonight?
Yes, he is. I'm not sure if he'd like to add anything, but we definitely invite him out to...
You'd like to come forward and state your name and a little bit about what you're looking for.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Jared Morgan. I'm with GWC Capital. We're a subsidiary of the Clyde Companies, and we're the master developer for this industrial park. So this is phase two of our industrial park, and we've been excited to bring this plat to you, as we have some exciting users already lined up for this area here shaded. It's plus or minus 82 acres, and we have three separate users, and we've catered the subdivisions specific to their acreage needs. So this is a continuation of what you already see happening out there in the park, and we intend to bring more to you in the coming months.
So are those parcels there, you have people who are interested in those as we speak, and are looking to move forward with their projects?
Correct. Yep. One, the larger parcel, has been targeted by a larger user that the city's been working with already on property to the east. So they're expanding within their industrial footprint. And then the parcel in the middle will be about a 600,000 square foot spec industrial building that the Boier Company is moving on. And then we already have a user in tow prepared for the 25 acres to the west. So...
Do you guys have the property that is to the east on the other side of the road? You have it?
Yeah, so we control the 17 acres right here. We have a Clyde Company affiliate that will be taking this piece down. I'm meeting with KaiCo, I believe, will be closing on their property hopefully in the next couple of months. So my assemblage here will be 20 acres. We're still working with the Blunk family. They've been very patient with us as constructions are happening around them. And we're still working with the... Thank you, Michael. Was that you?
Yeah.
Okay. Michael's always one step ahead of me. So I'll just orient you. In the blue is the 82 acres that we're talking about tonight. This is the large industrial user I referenced earlier that's taking down property here. This is the new Sunrock headquarters. So we control the 17 acres here. We're hoping to control all 40 eventually, but I don't believe the Hickmans are ready to sell yet or the Blunks. And then we're pursuing property north of SR 77. So I'm currently under contract on plus or minus 320 acres to the north.
So those individuals will be coming to us with preliminary plats and further information about what they're planning on building?
So I'm coming to you with a final plat with all the off-site design that you'll see, and then each respective parcel will come to you with their final site plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Have you reviewed staff's conditions and findings, and are you okay with them?
Yeah, I've had a little heartburn with the size of this road and all the utilities that are being required in this right-of-way. However, we understand the need and we understand the vision for this. I mean, this right-of-way is intended to come all the way down and connect to...
10, 11, 12?
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, we're honestly, we're just, it's a mirror image of what we're doing, everything we're doing already right here along SR 77, we're just continuing it all the way down west. And then we'll... So, yeah, to answer your question, we're fine with where our staff is at currently. You guys just like to build very wide roads in the city of Spanish Fork.
An industrial area when you have big trucks coming in and going.
Yeah, I get it. They're wider than roads in the inland port, though, up in Salt Lake. But it's okay. I mean, we understand the need. You know, when Brandon references a 90-acre parcel, it was until all the roadways took about eight acres out of the ground, out of the land, right? So, but we understand the need, and we're happy to accommodate, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Do not entertain a motion.
I move the planning commission recommends approval of the J6 plat. Brandon, you're cutting me off.
Sorry.
Just to clarify, you are the administrative body for this type of action, so it would be...
Approval. Even better. Fantastic. I move we approve the J6 industrial preliminary plat contingent upon applicant's compliance with staff's findings and conditions.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Our next item on our agenda tonight is a zone change request, D-Land West, and this is a public hearing. Dave, we'll hear from you first.
Yes, thank you. The applicant is the same for both of the next two items. The only zone changes that are on your agenda for tonight, in all candor, staff's recommendation for the first proposal, the D-Land West proposal, which would have the property zoned R3. It's the easy one to communicate, which simply is that staff does not support that zone change. The surrounding properties have been zoned either R19 or R112. And incidentally, this is one of the last properties, I'll state the obvious, to remain undeveloped in the area, in the immediate area. In fact, I think it is the last one. And as we talked, for example, in years past with folks like Ivory Homes that built to the north, they talked to us very much so about wanting to see a different type of housing than single-family homes there. It was the same kind of conversation that we had more recently when Arrive built just west of this site. And the city's position has been consistent over the years, that this is one area on the south side of Center Street at least, where the city felt that it was appropriate to have single-family homes on individual lots. And staff's recommendation that the R3 zone not be approved, but rather that the property be zoned either R19 or R112. And wherever this is worth, certainly in the role that I play, I'd be comfortable with either of those two zoning districts relative to process. I believe you understand that we generally don't bring zone changes to the planning commission in a public hearing without also having a preliminary plat prepared. I think it was most appropriate tonight to take a different route so the applicant could get airtime directly with you and with the neighbors in this setting during a public hearing. So in the event that you would like to perhaps recommend that the zoning be changed rather than just to deny the request, and I'm gonna say it a little bit differently than that even, if ultimately the city council, I think it is very important, and I would strongly suggest that relative to whatever recommendations you want to make tonight or whatever action you ultimately would like to take on the property, that you act tonight so the applicant can get likewise airtime with the city council and a public hearing with them as well. I think it's really important that that right that they have to go through that process is respected at this point, but I guess my recommendation would maybe be more for the city council at some point than that a zone change ultimately not be approved without having a preliminary plat accompany it. My concern simply is that I don't want to see any applicants go to the expense to prepare all of the related engineering plans and everything else that we require as the city in order to have a valid preliminary plat application prepared unless we've received some type of recently reliable indication that ultimately the city council is comfortable with that particular type of development. And in that case, or as it relates to a particular kind of development, I think we're really just talking about zoning, whether that be R3, R19, or R112. Does that make sense?
Sure.
I don't know if you have any questions for me. The applicant is here. At least I saw him. There he is. Typically, he likes to speak as well, so do you mind if I turn the time over to him?
Before we do that, are there any other questions of Dave or staff from the commission?
Current general plan for that area is...
Low-density residential.
And the R19 and the R112 both fit in low-density residential? Or is R19 a medium-density residential?
Typically, it's medium, so it would be stretching things to go R19.
Okay.
Thank you. Would you like to hear from the applicant?
You may.
State your name and...
My name is Vic Devano, and I've been building in Spanish Fork 40 years, and my great-grandfather colonized here, and so I attached to the area. And when I met with Dave and met with a few of the staff 30 years ago, we started Spanish Trails, which we bought part from the city and part from some of the great people who'd been here for years, and then bought another little piece and combined about 44 acres. And it's just on 400 West and 100 South, and named it Spanish Trails. And you'll notice that the first three blocks all have Spanish tiles on it. And we've cared about doing quality wherever we've gone. My guys who worked for me eventually got their construction degrees, and Gordy Jones is president of Edge Homes, which was one of the premier builders in Utah, but also lives this way. Lived in Spanish Trails, and then he also moved to Salem. So, and then Joel Harris, who was with us, was with us and still lives in Spanish Fork, and he's working with his father now and doing projects up in Hebrew area. So when I bought this project, I went to the city, and we talked about what we had done also, just four blocks immediately to the east, Spanish Trails, and the quality of what we do. And now we're even one of the top, and I say "we," I'm saying Edge Homes, because Edge Homes will be the builder, you know, for an owner with me. And we've got projects along the Wossetz Front, which are well-known, and not if the largest builder, we're one of the top three. And I think what we've proposed, we had a little bit of change, because even though a couple of blocks to the north, there are other townhomes. And originally in the plan, when we bought this, there was a different zoning, which has been changed, and that's okay. One of the things I did is, if you notice where the city justice court is and the police department on the 12.5 acres, I own that. And so they came to me, and over several months, a couple of the old mayors and everybody else petitioned and said, "Vic, would you do this project and take the 10.3 acres up on the golf course in lieu of this?" And I said, "Well, we do density and things like this." And so I trusted the city and trusted that eventually, that it was about 13, 14 years ago. And so this all came into conjunction here because the Thomases, who had this block over here and still has his home where it says RR and has his little ranch right there still, Jeffrey, and they sold, not Jeffrey, it's a... Yeah. Somebody say something? All right. It's one of the brothers. Elsie was a good friend, and Elsie lived there at the house, and so I rebuilt the house for them for Elsie to be able to live there as part of the 12 and a half acre acquisition that we did. Then Ellis Ivory is right over across the street from our, you know, you've got Arrive Homes. The people to the east was a subdivision that was done, and we plan on beautifying the homes that are back to us on the east side and building a nice residential, good-looking fence that they could have and have the value. We're also not talking about doing townhomes, because there seems to be something about townhomes, even though in Salt Lake County and West County here, North County, you know, they average about 18 units an acre, and they build probably the most beautiful townhomes, and they last, and they're just beautiful. That's all I gotta say. They're well-done on top material, and side streetscapes are beautiful, you know, and so... So on this, what I've done is taken away the townhomes, and I'm going to, in that, do smaller lots like we did at Spanish Trails, which major builders are doing now. And we have 50, 60-foot wide lots, 80, 85, 90 foot deep. And I put a little video, I don't know, Mike, if, I don't know if he's got that or not. Can you show that little video of Spanish Trails? Did that come up for you when I sent it to you?
I'm refreshing, see if it came in.
Okay. I just have a video of...
Real quick.
Yeah.
You're no longer proposing this, what you sent into the city earlier, a few days ago? Is that true?
No, no, we've had often, I mean, I'm not here to sit and fight when I can do single-family homes almost the same size, and people own their property. And this is why I'm showing you Spanish Trails, and multiple places in Utah County and Salt Lake County have gone to this now because of affordability. I mean, everyone here knows what the cost has happened in the last, you know, two, three years, and the thing that has kept building and developing going is the fact that money is at 2%, 2.5%. Without it, there would be a stimey, because if you remember, we've had lumber and stuff go up almost 300% in many of the instruments inside, you know, all the kitchen, tiles, roofing, you know, everything has just gone up sky-high. And we're hoping that's coming down a little bit. But that's why we're proposing, we want to be good neighbors, and we can increase value to wherever we're at. And it's been that way for over 10 years in Salt Lake and Utah County. In fact, when I came down to the city to talk, and I think Dave will agree, is that Dave said, "Vic, would you be doing this with Edge Homes?" And I said, "Absolutely." I mean, they're like my partners, but I'm not a partner, but we have been together, and I trained them and included them to get to school and get their construction degrees and things like this. So I'm very proud of Gordy and Joel, and Jed is also here.
Jed, where are you?
Jed works with Edge Homes and lives down in this direction also, so we've talked about doing single-family all the way through it. We would do the larger units, which would be close to Arrive, but you have to remember is that we're donating land and also doing a fence along there, but it has to be a see-through fence, because this is walking. I would never want the city in that walking spot there that comes, that actually comes to theirs, I understand it, Dave, is it right? It comes in, goes all the way up to our property. You can have a trail that goes all the way up to the river bottoms now and to River Bottoms Road to the golf course. And so this trail kind of comes there, which is on the west side.
Would you mind using your pointer so I can see?
Do I have a pointer here? Okay, sure.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I didn't know I had this. So right in here, you see, you know, this comes here, and this here already is part of the trail, and we're doing this other part of the trail, and this is going to be access into here, but these have to be all visible, see-through fencing so that people can be secure if there's a problem. You know, we won't have many problems, because people won't come to harass them if people can see through these fences and stuff like this. And it's a common thing now when you have a trail system, so it's not unusual. But we'll build that, and over on this side, we're talking about here, we'll have a complete beautiful fence that we've done in the past that will be, you know, either concrete or, you know, of substance of concrete mixed, and it'll have a nice plaque fashion into it with the window panes and stuff that way. And now, instead of seeing these townhomes of four, five, six, and four, now you're gonna see single lots coming down here, and you're gonna see single lots coming here. And we will keep these lots and these lots here, but we want this here and this here before the road. And if you take a look at it, it's mixed-use, but it's homes. And so the whole difference of what's happened to density and stuff like this is always to me, and I've been in this business 40 years, when you do quality, people give you some... We're talking about two units, you know, we're talking about two units per acre, or three at the most when you're talking about four and a half. And you're still getting in the major of it, you're still getting this here, which are at four, and then you're putting the single-family, smaller cottage, beautiful homes here that goes on this side here and with the beautiful fencing here. And then they got the canal here, which we use, because right now we've had, we've been farming this, and we have animals and sheep and goats and horses and everything else that have come into there over the last 25 years. And prior to that, Jeff and his family used to do the alfalfa, which we did for about 15 years. Right now, we're doing magra and a couple other things, which goes once a year, but it's much higher in protein. And so your horses and cows love it, but it has to be chewed up. So that's what we're doing here. We're having access there, access into here and off of, you know, 100 South. And we think that the plan, and we're asking you to look ahead of affordability, not everybody can afford a 450, 500-plus-thousand-dollar home. And originally, when I came to the city 40 years ago, this whole west side was going to be like Spanish Trails, which is only up on 400 West, and then you have Salisbury Homes, and then you've got another set of homes, and then this was Fieldstone and stuff. And these are good homes, but Fieldstone was not required to build the way, they came in after we did. So if you do have that video, did it come through?
It did come through.
Oh, has it come through?
Do you have your phone? I can try to make it work.
Or if you want, if you just want to see, you want to show...
Yeah, if you can just show...
We could go to preview.
Yeah, show the preview and show the, like, second south, the vintage on the side there where they see the mix of the four different homes that we have, you know, we're in that whole subdivision. And we did, that's a mixed-use, and there was 260 homes that were allowed, and we end up allowing the five-acre piece for the Mormon Church. We did a trail all the way along this side. If this was like Spanish, we'd come all the way down here and come all the way over, and then they've got a subdivision there, and then right across the street is the 70-acre ballfields and parks and tennis courts that are there. So...
So if you want to see...
Yeah, let's see. Yeah, just show that corner and show the other corner would be great. I just want you to see how they look after, you know, 25, 30 years in having these Spanish tiles and the things that we do. And so it's been, quite frankly, I'm very proud of this. This was, you know, there wasn't a home in here over $175,000, and now they sell for 350-plus or whatever, just because of the quality of the building. And so we're very proud of what we do, and the fact of it is, the proof is in the pudding, and when Edge Homes come in, it's pretty sold out pretty fast, just for the fact when they go to other builders and other developers, they take a look at it. So I'm just simply asking you, I have conceded to the city on the townhomes, which I don't want to do, because I think townhomes can stay level and can stay cheaper, but you can build them in the same frontage and beautiful bricks, beautiful rock that we do, and beautify the back. And people, quite frankly, I don't have a lot of people that want to take care of big yards anymore, you know, and part of it's because of affordability, and then the other part of it is there isn't that much land, you know, where we can just have everybody have a half acre, you know, or three-quarters of an acre anymore. And so we've really liked what we've done here. I'm grateful to Spanish Fork and the people who know this part of it, you know, we had Nelson here, and he was the banker, great sheep guy, loved him to death, and we had the barbers that... And, uh, we had the barbers that got part of this. We bought the rest of this and Spanish Fork owned about thirty acres. And, uh, we told them we would build something that would be absolutely beautiful for them. And that's what we did. We put a little park here. This trail comes all the way here, comes over here and comes up and then can hook it down into here and goes up into the river bottoms. And so you've got a nice trail system. And this trail comes down here and goes and connects to, uh, eleven-hundred, about eleven-hundred west where we're at right now. And about, I guess, probably about three-hundred south, maybe four-hundred south. And we've got the trail that's been planned in the other development. We're the last part of this side of one hundred south, heading, heading south. So, uh, if that makes sense. Is this this right here?
Mm-hmm.
So, so you got the trail here. We got the trail that comes all the way down, comes here and then goes right, to the river and runs right up all the way to the river. You can ride it, you can walk it. Many people still horse it a little bit, but there's been less and less over the last five years now coming through this subdivision here. And they've still used the trail there and then they've come down. So the horses will be a little different, but we're all the way up. So if you take a look at it, you take a look at these homes and everything that they did. And these are good, these are good homes. I didn't have a home until I was eighteen. I was raised by a single mom with six kids. And so this would have been luxury to me, you know, and stuff. Today, these are still good homes. But we're building something just a little bit different, a little bit, you know, a higher quality, you know, than what was built ten years ago or fifteen years ago. And, uh, we're gonna maintain it with what we've done at Spanish Trails. But yet with all of the new building codes and things that we do, there'll be a wonderful subdivision, again, just like Spanish Trails is, for decades to come. And so I'm asking you, please, take a real look at it and take a look at the affordability of having these single-lot homes, just like Spanish Trails down there. And you've got them coming right here to here. And then you've got beautiful homes that match these homes here and stuff like that with the trail connecting over here and the trail continuing on. So that's what I'm really asking for.
Okay, thanks Vic.
Nothing, nothing more, you know. So, any questions?
Any other questions?
Yes.
Okay.
The single-family homes, the smaller ones, what size lots will they be on?
Well, we normally do, you know, between, same thing at Spanish Trails. Those that you saw there, other than the corner lot that was a scape that we put in-
Do you have a square footage?
Yeah, they're between fifty and sixty feet and eighty-five to ninety-five feet long. And then meets all of the curb, front-side appeal and everything else that's necessary to be off of that.
Is fifty by eighty-five a good calculation?
Yeah, fifty by eighty-five, fifty by, you know, ninety-five, you know.
About five thousand square feet?
Yeah.
Just like in general? Well, it's four, so it's forty-five hundred, everybody, just try that.
Yeah. With corners and things.
Five thousand average?
Right.
And then in the interior, the interior lots that are clearly bigger, what size lots are those?
Uh, we're matching, I think they're, they're, those lots are, you know, I think we are at four-point-one, what is it, Dave, that we can have in there, four-point-one-two or four-point-two-five on the bigger lots?
Well, rural residential is what it's part of the zone, so.
Yeah, so it's like, it's like about four-point-one units per acre, you know, for those lots.
If it's zone R-19, it would be, uh, three-point-five homes per acre.
Okay, that's twelve thousand four hundredish per-
If it's zone R-16, then it'd be at five-point-three. So we need to talk about a couple of other zoning options in addition to the R-3, which is what the applicant has requested and what staff has suggested.
Yeah, well-
So Vic, the thir-, it's showing thirty single-family homes. And those, if, if what Dave is saying is right, and I would like to confirm, is that tw- around twelve thousand square feet per lot?
No.
What is it?
No, there won't be twelve thousand square, there'll be more like eight to nine, you know. I mean, that's, there's no twelve thousand square foot lots there that I know of.
There aren't.
What?
There aren't.
No.
You're right.
I mean-
It's eight to nine thousand is the, is the mean.
And that's what, that's what we'll, yeah, I understand.
He was saying three-and-a-half per acre and that's twelve thousand.
Yeah, it's a lot.
We're counting, that's then per acre after roads.
Oh, that's why, that's why you're going with that. I get it.
But at eight thousand square feet, you have a beautiful home, you can have side, side yards. Even on the small, even on the small side yards, you notice that people had their toys, you know, side-by-sides, had trailers and beautiful things there. And because the homes look nice, you don't, you know, it's like they blend in and they're not just, you know, protruding out and intrusive, you know, intrusive.
So what's the total unit count? Because it, if you're not going off of, if you're not going off of this anymore, do you know?
Take a look at that, uh, we'll probably be, that one, do you guys have that? Can you put that up then? Can you put that, uh, one up with the townhomes on it? So you had sixty-four total. And we, we will probably be about fifty-four, fifty-five, or fifty-six in the lots. Because the lots are, so we'll be losing about eight to ten units.
And they'll be, they'll be single-family homes detached. They're not gonna be, there's no connecting walls.
Oh, no, no, it's just like you saw in Spanish Trails. I mean, they're, they're gonna be identical. I mean, Spanish Trail lots are sixty, fifty to sixty, you know, feet wide.
Sure. So keeping the thirty single-family homes and then approximately twenty-six to twenty-eight smaller?
Smaller, still single-family homes, yeah, just like we showed you. That's all we're asking. And it's, it's a nice blend of homes and affordability for people to live and be together. And so, and, uh, these people have little larger lots and we're gonna give them a beautiful fence here that they don't have. And so we want to beautify the area. And I think that you can go to any Edge Homes and go to edgehomes.com and take a look and you'll see, we beautify areas that we come to. We are very conscious of streetscapes, affordability, mid-affordability. We build some luxury, but the majority of the homes we build are like second, second-step-up homes and stuff, you know, now. And we build some third-step-up homes. But when we built Spanish Trails, every one of them were at entry-level at the time, you know, because of the cost. The cost since then now has tripled or quadrupled in cost of land and cost of product, cost of, you know, everything that goes into build a home. So there isn't one thing that's the same. I wish I could still buy, you know, a nice tub for, you know, a hundred-and-ninety-nine bucks that lasts thirty years or forty years, but it's not the case. And same thing with all that, we use top carpet. And, uh, we're, quite frankly, we build a little different than a lot of other people do. We come in and we have twenty trades that alternate. And we build faster and more conclusive and better than anybody else. Your inspectors will love what we do. And in fact, your city attorney comes from a city where, you know, they've raved about who we are and where we are. And he was in the, in the DRC. And, uh, Edge Homes has an incredible reputation. And so.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thanks Vic.
Okay.
Thanks Vic.
That's the first part.
This is a public hearing. And so at this time, we'll go into the public hearing. I don't know how many of you are here for this particular hearing. But, uh, we will hold each, uh, speaker to three minutes or less in your comments. And if your feelings or your ideas have been, uh, said by somebody prior to you, we ask that you not repeat the things that we've heard. We will go ahead and let everyone have a chance to speak about this, we'd like to. And then we will hold our responses or the responses from staff until after all, all of the, uh, all of the comments have been made. So with that, we're now in public hearing. And you're welcome to come up, state your name, where you live, in Spanish Fork, and, uh, give us your ideas about this, this project.
Jake Lastly. And I'm just off of three hundred south there, just on eleven-seventy west, a couple of houses down there from this, from this lot. I've talked to a couple of neighbors. Our concern really is the density right there abutting three hundred south. We already have a lot of parking issues right there. And we're worried about all that high-density and that traffic and parking right there on that road. If that was moved up into the, the, the development up farther up where they can contain the parking up and keep the traffic up on the highway up on First, would appreciate that more.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're on one hundred south, not three hundred.
It's one to three hundred, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just talking three hundred south there.
Stan McShinsky. I live, um, ten-fifty west right here. And, um, one of the concerns that I've talked with some neighbors about too is just the density. Mostly just the townhomes issue. Just, it doesn't fit the rest of the neighborhood. And then, uh, just the design on this layout here, I don't know how, how final this is either, but, uh, it was thought that it might be better to move the road to line up with eleven-seventy already so it's more of a thoroughfare instead of, uh, kind of zigzag your way out. And then part of the comment from, from Vic about the, uh, the fence on the, on the trail side, if I have a pointer. Okay, so the, the trail here and there, in this, um, he mentioned that there needs to be a see-through fence there. That actually doesn't match the rest of the trail going south from there. The, the trail does have, uh, full six-foot vinyl fences the whole way down, um, all the way to, all the way to the river. Anyway, and so that's, I guess that's about, yeah.
Stan, quick question.
Thank you.
Quick question first. Does this section right here have a see-through fence?
No, on the, on the left side, no.
Okay.
Just the, the one on the right, because it's not developed, just has a, like, barbed wire fence.
Thank you.
There was a new code apparently that's going to be, we're happy to go with that. We're not encouraging the fence. It's just, uh, they told us when I heard you talk about it, that there was a new code about making sure that people have visibility if it was a block or more than two blocks. And this is actually about two-and-a-half blocks long. And so, you know, it's just a matter of security for people who could be walking with their kids or running or doing whatever. So it's not, but the cost is the same for a niceness. The fence would be a niceness on that one.
And then, I know this isn't quite the design as far as the townhomes go, but we were thinking the high-density might be better looking. The, the townhome sections would be better against the fence side and the town, the houses more facing on the other side. Taking, you know, taking account where the neighbors backs up against and such. But, because that way the townhomes back up against the fence, more of the space kind of behind them.
So flip-flop.
Yeah. Anyway, that's, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, concerns from the public? Seeing none, we will go out of public hearing. And, uh, we'll address those things that have been brought up, uh, by the three people who have expressed concerns.
Michael, could you put those, the general plan map up again?
Low-density and then medium.
Yeah.
And the, the zoning to the west here does not, does, is not congruent with the general plan. R-19 is a higher density than the general plan allows right there. It's actually low-density right there.
General plan.
So this is what it currently is. This is what it's built out at right now.
That's the current zoning and yeah, it's built out that way.
Okay.
On the west and the east and just the south.
All right.
I was checking lot sizes as well. It's consistent with R-19. It is an R-19, but it's more of an R-19 master plan. So not, the lots are not nine thousand square feet always, which means it was a master plan development. They got less than nine thousand often on both sides.
The average, right?
Average.
The average.
Yeah, but at, 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 there was a time when the R-19 meant there could not be a lot less than nine thousand square feet, correct? It's still that way if somebody does a standard subdivision.
So, yeah, so it was a master plan development.
It was a master plan development.
It's just that the average was.
Which is the main difference between two different ways that subdivisions can be approved in Spanish Fork. One, as just a standard subdivision, where every lot in the project meets some very, very explicitly described rigid criteria for lot width and depth and setbacks and that type of a thing. We have a program called the master plan development that allows developers to propose projects where some of those design criteria are flexible. Uh, but yet in terms of the number of homes that can be in a development, the idea is that it's not ever going to be any greater than what you get with a standard subdivision. In reality, that's not necessarily true, I think typically. With the flexibility comes an opportunity, oftentimes for developers maybe to get one or two more homes in a project. And there we focus more on, and I can describe it a lot of ways, but I would just say for now, maybe an average lot size that meets the minimum lot size of, of whatever zone it's in. So you're talking about R-19 where the minimum lot size is nine thousand square feet. It's a project that arrived built to the, and I apologize if I'm repeating what you said.
Yeah, that's what, you're saying what I said, but it's probably good you're saying it slower.
Just for everybody, just to be clear, as clear as we can about, um, I think what ultimately does impact the zoning you might be comfortable with, arrives project to the west of the subject property that was developed as a master plan development. So again, there the focus was on average lot size.
This right here.
Right. And oftentimes, that approach does benefit the city because of, um, that leniency. Oftentimes, developers are willing to work with us more in terms of needed road dedications and some things like that, which certainly, in my opinion, is a benefit for the city, so.
Right, okay.
So Dave, this, this, uh, development here on the north side of, uh, one hundred south, is also R-19. And I would imagine that it had to do with average lot size was where you have the corner lots that obviously are, are a little larger. And it gave way to having a few more homes in this area. So, uh, that's probably a little bit of what happened here as well with a few, uh, larger lots. But in this case, you know, uh, the applicant is asking for even, uh, smaller lot size than what we have there. And in this entire area, until you get to these condos, which are on the north side of Center Street, uh, there is nothing smaller than R-19.
There is no, um, lower average lot size than nine thousand square feet is more accurate to say. There are lots that are smaller than nine thousand square feet, but it's, it's because of what you said. And I can go into a lot of detail about this if you want.
We get it.
Maybe for everybody, but this is a good example here of one of the things that, um, would allow for a developer to have lots that are smaller than nine thousand square feet, which we believe is a benefit for the city. Um, the anticipated widening of Center Street as we approach a planned interchange here is really significant. If you look at Center Street going in either direction, it's an extremely wide facility. And the land that the city required this developer to dedicate for that expansion was really substantial. So that's partly how their lot sizes ended up becoming less than nine thousand square feet as well.
Okay, I have, I have two comments about what's about, especially what, I'm sorry, I didn't write your last names, what Jake and Stan had to say. I have also, we've talked a whole lot about parking. We, we continue to talk a whole lot about parking in dense, in dense area, places that are, um, dense. In Spanish Fork, we really love our trucks and our, yeah, all our play vehicles and such. And, um, and in, and in densely, dense housing, it just becomes more of a challenge. It's good to hear, I like hearing about a single-family home with a driveway and a place to park something on the side better. But I also like what Stan said about fencing. If this is a trail here, I like the idea of higher density here. And I thought, I thought higher density here is a better idea too if, if we were to approve something like that, but.
You could flip-flop the plan, that's not true.
Right, right.
The problem is, R, R matches the other east side. The table of homes match the east side then and then they do to the west side. Which is why we did that, because you take a look at when they were built, how they were built.
Right.
I was gonna invite you to the mic.
Oh, yeah.
They're trying to record this for all the, the hundreds of viewers, Vic.
They're trying to record this for all the, the hundreds of viewers, Vic.
Yeah.
Right.
And I like to address the parking because you notice I just showed you one street, and there wasn't one car parked on there, and I just took that before I came here. And so, there's, in Spanish Trails, I can't say they never parked there, but I can tell you that it keeps people slow. And we've had very few accidents, you can check the police report to take a look in Spanish Trails. When you have a confined area like this, and you've got that road that comes through, and then the other one hooks in and comes through, and you only got one outlet on three hundred south, which is very important.
Right.
When you have less entrance and people have to congregate to that point in a small subdivision where it's not backing up, it slows it down. And we're authority because Spanish Trails runs all the way from one hundred south clear out to the ball fields.
Yeah.
Okay? And we haven't had problems there. And so, please take the experience that we've had, you know, over thirty years, being here in major subdivisions and forty years in building other projects, you know, and stuff with people, so that's why we suggested this. And you must remember quality. I would just like somebody one time to say here that quality matters, and you're gonna have a home that has.
Some things are obvious, we agree with you, of course.
Yeah, but if it has to be said, I mean, it just has to be said about quality.
Quality matters.
Yeah.
It does.
I said it, Vic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Vic.
I just have one other thing to say, as far as my opinion with this goes, is honestly I think that, I have to look at my notes, but I feel like we're starting to run short in low-density areas in Spanish Fork, and to go at a higher density in an area that zoned lower density but has been built out medium density, I hate to go higher density. There are a lot of townhomes in higher density already slated and approved in our, in Spanish Fork, and so I feel like in this particular area, it really ought to match the rest of the neighborhood. And that, that's just, that's my personal opinion in this one.
If we were looking at medium density, and I know that's not what the proposal is, but how, what is the maximum amount of units you could fit on this parcel if it was R one nine, like the surrounding areas?
So the R one nine has a, an allowable density of just under three and a half homes per acre, so that would be twenty-five. R one twelve would be eighteen at two point six one units to the acre, and R three would allow for a maximum of eighty-six.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
My thoughts are, when I'm deliberating any proposal in front of me, I try to take, keep in mind the neighboring property owners and the future property owners and the current property owner, and I try and weigh and balance, how will this development affect the neighbors, and how will the neighbors affect the new neighbors, and is everyone property, are all the property rights properly weighed, where the new homes aren't going to overly, overly burden the homes that are already there? I think that's the proper role of government, call me old-fashioned. So in this case, R one nine, R one nine, R one nine, and then you have a church to the north, R one twelve. I think it's, it's very appropriate to have an R one nine, even an R one nine master plan development, to give the developer a little bit of flexibility on what size lots, each lot's gonna be, but within an R one nine designation like the neighboring, so that they can maximize the land that they have, as far as the civil engineer has a little bit more flexibility to make it work. So for me, it seems absolutely appropriate that that would work. Now, having said that, Vic, this is for you. The five thousand square foot lots, I think, I don't see anything wrong with that, but in this spot, it doesn't work. But I don't see anything wrong with that. I think it's a great, I think it can be a great product in the right spot. But it doesn't, for me, it doesn't work here in this location.
Anyone else? I tend to agree with what we just said, that considering all of the property that surrounds this on three sides, and actually to the north too, the church is directly to the north, but the project just east of the church, this is different. I know that the applicant builds good stuff, he's got examples of it, and Edge builds great homes, and I have no doubt about that. But when it comes to the density that's in there, I think that that does affect other, other property around it, and I think that although it's a good, it's a good plan, it probably doesn't fit this little spot of ground. If this would have been built when you acquired the property and you didn't have the, the homes built to the west, and that had the ability to as well have a different zone and whatnot, it would be a different thing. But I just hesitate to go with, with the plan as it is now, and would encourage the developer to go the other route and to go to at least an R one nine. And R, or R one twelve, I've had, I have a number of friends, neighbors, a couple of boys that have lived in this neighborhood, and it's, it's a good neighborhood, homes are nice, on decent lots, and I recall very well, Spanish Trails going in, and nothing wrong with that, it's a beautiful little subdivision, love it.
This Old English originally planned to build out that direction of the Spanish Trails.
True.
The city had plans to change things, but everybody worries about size of the lot, and to be all across the west its front now, it's not the size of the lot that matters anymore. That's just, and it's something I just pinned in, it's a fact. And I mean, we average eighteen townhomes in beautiful subdivisions, beautiful subdivisions, and they've been built ten, twelve, fourteen years ago now, and they're, and cities welcome to have them in the sense next to homes that are two times the value. But you're looking at three hundred.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, if you're gonna talk to us, you gotta come to the mic.
Yeah, I just asked.
You just come up.
Yeah, this is being recorded though.
All right. So I was just saying that, you know, the single-family lot, whether it's a quarter of an acre or a sixth of an acre, has proven out not to matter as much as you would put into it. The fact of it is, is that the quality matters, the area matters, and a mixed use really helps the areas of people that, that live in. I mean, so it's just how it is. We have large projects where we have townhomes, and next to that, we have third acres, then next to that, we have quarter acres, then we have mixed-use type subdivisions. And so, you're still where you're at right now, and they're gonna come back and probably ask us to help out on one hundred south, because I've heard that they want to enlarge one hundred south also, because it goes under the freeway, the same way that, what is it? Two, what, it's the other one, two hundred north or one hundred north, whatever it is that goes under, that they're planning on having come out there on the other side of, of the subdivision to the north. But it's, I don't know, it's, you know, the only thing we ever have is opposite, you know, like it's, where people object and it's about sizing and not really about function, you know, and when you have mixed use, there's a great use of people, because today's life is entirely different than two years ago, five years ago, and ten years ago. The cost of the home was two hundred, two fifty, three hundred, three fifty. Even these small homes are in the three hundred thousand dollar plus category now, you know, whereas you could take twenty-five, thirty years ago, we sold them for a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and seventy-five. So how many people, and you can keep saying it because it's two percent, but what happens when the economy goes down and we don't have any active places other than townhomes where people have a single-family lot and can build quality into that lot? And I think each of you should really consider about saying, oh, we're just gonna stay at R nine or R twelve, and maybe consider, you know, we're talking about two units, we're not talking about dozens of units, ten, twelve, fourteen per acre, and that's all we are asking for, so. I just, from a, from a building perspective.
Yeah.
I understand your point, and I, and I, I'm not going to debate that issue at all. I just feel like when you have a surrounding area, it's a little tougher to go in and drop something else in its, in, in the middle of it. And that's what I'm, that's what I'm a little bit leery of here. It is zoned what it is, and the surrounding area complies with that.
And I think.
And that's my, that's my feeling, but.
Yeah. I think also it's good to go with the general plan for an area and not piecemeal the zoning out. I, I, I agree that, I agree with you, and I just think it's partly where you put it is, and where, where it goes on the general plan, where it goes on the map.
Any other comments? I would entertain a motion.
Joseph, you're the expert motioner.
Michelle, you wanna go?
Sure.
Okay.
I move that we recommend to deny the proposed zone change to R three.
Second?
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
You'll have another opportunity to go before the city council.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
It's a battle. You lost the battle, you might win the war. We will move then to four B, which is D Land East. It's another zoning request, and again, this will be a public hearing, so we'll go ahead, Dave, if you'll take us into it.
Once again, thank you, Mr. Minnall. The, the action that's proposed here is the same, it's proposed zone change. The situation with this property in my mind's quite a bit different in a handful of ways. I'm gonna try to go through those fairly quick. First of all, we've been talking for a long time about the river bottoms and what should happen in the river bottoms, and the city is still working on a project that at the end of the day is intended to result in land use changes in the river bottoms that the community supports. Relative to this particular piece of property, as we as staff have looked at it for a lot of different reasons, frankly, simply because, I guess even I would say it's sandwiched in between the golf course and existing development. We think in this case, there's certainly a submerit to looking at this from a development perspective, at least differently than we would other areas in the river bottoms, which as a concept is supported by one of the more, I think, important kind of points in history, or points about just the history of the property, that I'm gonna describe at a very high level, but don't believe necessarily that you or the city council should, you know, really make that a basis for determining what you think the most appropriate land use here is. This property was acquired by the applicant in a trade that he did with the city some ten-plus years ago, and the property that the applicant traded, the city, for this ten-acre site, is where the city's justice center is today. At that time, when the trade was made, without any doubt, the development of this property was contemplated. An agreement that was entered into between the city and Mr. DeBano at that point in time, even articulated a certain number of homes that were envisioned to be constructed here. Now, for a number of different reasons, myself and other people on staff think that different provisions of that agreement at this point in time probably shouldn't be the focus of your review, but I certainly think it's very, very important to acknowledge that that trade was made entirely with the idea that the applicant would have an opportunity to develop this property. So we're here tonight, I think coming from that perspective, in the hope that you will give us your candid thoughts relative to what perhaps an appropriate development type might be. For this particular ten-acre site, the applicant has provided a concept plan, which is a combination of lots for single-family homes and townhomes. I think I can just mention a couple of other things as my two cents and sort of wrap up. This site is adjacent to the city's golf course. In terms of the type of housing that oftentimes you see in proximity or adjacent to a golf course, the density would be often higher than what you'd see in a more typically suburban kind of an environment, I guess. If the most average maybe lot size in Spanish Fork is in the ten thousand square foot range, then I think it would not be unreasonable to expect that you would see some type of a design configured that would be more dense than that in an environment like this, typically even where individual home sites try to capitalize on some type of, of frontage, is how I view it with the golf course itself, some type of visibility into the golf course, something that would connect this project in some way, or at least give the feeling that the, the neighborhood is in some way connected to the golf course. Golf course-oriented development, generally speaking over the years, has been very highly sought after. The type of development that you generally see in close proximity, certainly adjacent to a golf course, typically is elevated relative to other types of construction and that sort of thing that you might see otherwise in a particular community. As we've talked with Mr. DeBano over the past several months about the potential development here, I think he's certainly represented to the city that that's his intent, to construct homes and, and so forth on the subject property that, that matches that, that customary type of, you know, at the end of the day, housing product that you see next to golf courses. As is the case with the previous project that we talked about, we really haven't gotten into the weeds yet though, about specifically what that means in terms of specific design criteria for homes, even really beyond what the applicant's provided with his concept plan, what the composition might be in terms of single-family homes or anything else that gets built here. I really am very interested tonight to get your thoughts on, on really that, I think, aspect of the proposal, then we can kind of talk about maybe what zoning might correspond with what the commission thinks is appropriate here. It is just, you know, at least at a high level, what might the best, I'll say it again, composition of housing be for this site if it were to develop residentially? The applicant has given a concept plan to the city with a total of eighty homes. That would require the R three zone, which conceivably would allow for as many as a hundred and twenty homes on the site. The R one six zone, for example, would allow for fifty-two. The R one eight zone, thirty-nine. The R one nine zone, thirty-five, and the R one twelve zone, twenty-six. Just to give you some idea as to how the different zoning tools would maybe correspond to a particular design, or just how many homes could legally be constructed on this ten-acre site. There is one other thing that absolutely can be addressed. It takes some time, and given some recent experience that we've had, it's something that we would want to have addressed, I believe, fairly early on in the actual approval process of the subdivision. It is just a floodplain aspect of the subject property where some of it is in an area that's been identified by FEMA as a one-hundred-year floodplain. Incidentally, it's my understanding that that is something that can be addressed with some time and effort and ultimately the approval of FEMA, but just mention that to make sure that's out in the open for everybody to understand.
Could you point where they've identified the floodplain?
You'll see with this, a dark blue shade, that's a floodway, and I don't think it really impacts this property at all. It's an entirely hands-off designation where no construction activity or development's permitted. It's that darker blue shade. Yeah, I don't believe this property's impacted by that at all. So this property is right in here, so it's kind of this middle area right here. By going through a process with FEMA, essentially property that's in the, the light blue area, I know it is the hundred-year floodplain, properties can be taken out of that. So that potential certainly exists, but again, I just wanted to mention that as, as one of the things that would have to be addressed. So maybe to say it a little bit differently, I really think. So, maybe to say it a little bit differently, I really think this is, um, something of a clean slate. Um, and as well, just from my perspective, I think, uh, the city does indeed have some obligation to work with, uh, some developer at some point in time. Um, I think it'd probably be very appropriate, given that this is the property owner that worked with the city on the trade, to try to come up with some, you know, rational path towards the development of this property. But at the same time, I think, uh, again, it's a very clean slate in terms of you and the city council determining what the most appropriate type of development would be for the property.
So, is, is, I'm gonna speculate, but I'm trying to figure out, so then why did staff recommend denial? What's the background of that?
Uh, collectively, the development review committee felt that eighty homes on this site was, um, too many. Um, and maybe to touch on a couple of, uh, particular thoughts that I have about the design that the applicant's provided. Um, first of all, I do think the flood plain issue as well needs to be addressed before we get to where staff would recommend the development be approved. And then early zoning for it, but-
And then maybe speak to this too, 'cause you also said that you didn't want to put the applicant through all the civil engineering and everything to provide a full and complete application when you wanted to get the planning commission's opinion on it first. So I'm sure that's part of it, but I'm trying to understand how staff, staff recommended denial.
The most fundamental reason, I believe, not to speak for everybody that was a part of the vote that led to that recommendation, just that eighty homes on the site-
Okay.
-was too many. Um, I think the concept plan, if we can flip back to that for a second, Mike, in my opinion, um, well, I'll mention why I think eighty's too many.
We changed that date, that's not current.
Okay.
That's what we have.
We can look for the latest and greatest.
Yeah, it's not current, but we have the word. You, you, you made the suggestion, uh, of having more of the lots facing the golf course. So every fifty acres we have facing the golf course. So, there's a disadvantage out of the ownership, I've had no idea, and I'm not in charge of that. Jets, not either, it's another group out of edge. So I'm sorry about that, but I can, I can address it as far as where we're at, maybe, right now there, so.
Okay, will you finish and then we'll hear Frank?
Sure. I have a question.
Yeah.
I think partly because of the density, this design, particularly the townhome area, in my opinion, doesn't capitalize on its adjacency to the golf course at all.
Okay.
Very few of the homes have any, whether it's a view corridor into the golf course or, um, it's kind of, any kind of golf course orientation. I think it's a real missed opportunity.
So I'm noticing you're not saying you're, the city staff is against developing here. I'm not hearing that from you.
Correct.
Go.
Yeah. Um, and like you said as well, um, uh, well, your comment about us not wanting to get the cart before the horse in terms of getting too far down the road before we have some engineered plans and things like that, that, uh, we think only, well, we think zoning should only be changed when we have that level of detail before us. It's, it is indeed-
Hundred percent.
-that situation as well, but yet, um, getting your feedback, it's the same situation. Um, understanding what you're comfortable with in the city council before an applicant spends that kind of money, I think in this case is really important.
Uh, why typically do you have, uh, a housing product elevated next to a golf course? You said, that was just one thing you said, 'cause I know that, that a, a bunch of the neighbors that are here are going to talk about having homes elevated and block their view. So why do you want elevated home, elevated homes next to a golf course?
Well, um, not that I'm suggesting there shouldn't be any two-story homes there or that they should be, that-
Why is it typical?
Poor choice of words maybe on my part. Elevated meaning higher level of quality, sorry.
Oh, oh, oh.
That's what I, and I think typically that happens because that's what the market demands.
Correct, so you want, yeah.
But also, in the case of Spanish Fork, we don't have many other proper, well, I'm not aware of another property that's adjacent to the golf course where you could have, um, a golf course-oriented type of development where, you know, again, you'd see and, and I can maybe, uh, try to describe what that higher level of quality would, would mean to me. And I certainly think that, um, the home building company that Mr. Devano's talked about, Edge Homes, they have the ability to produce.
I agree with that.
What we would envision having is being just a, a different level of quality next to the golf course.
Well, like, when you, with the, the, um, townhomes or condos or whatever they are that do back up to the golf course headed up the hill above powerhouse, so those are really high-quality products, really nice.
And certainly for their era, they very much so were.
Right.
If you're thinking of what I'm thinking of, of the homes that were built thirty-plus years ago.
Right.
Sometimes I fetch golf balls out of their backyard. I should admit that. Sometimes I go left.
Probably not the right place to-
Okay, so you're talking about the quality of the homes rather than the elevation or the height-
Thank you.
-of the home, okay, thank you, that was, that's important.
Anything else for staff before we hear from the, the, uh?
I guess my other question is, what's our, what's the general, current general plan for this, right now?
Yeah, that's-
Public facility. I have it printed out, I'll let you show you. Maybe we can pull it up too, the public facility.
Okay.
Which in my mind-
Because it's seen as part of the golf course area.
Yeah, I think that's a carryover from when the city owned the property.
Okay.
It's also zoned, public facility.
Okay.
Part of the reason why, again, I, I certainly think changing the zoning to allow for some kind of use, beneficial use, um, you know, for the applicant, this is a very appropriate time to talk about that, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll invite, yeah, applicant to come up again.
So good to see everybody here, thank you so much. Uh, first of all, I, I wanted to address, uh, what is here. And, uh, I have been a member, uh, and great friend of the Datweilers for over forty-five years. And my good friend, younger Datweiler, was killed on the condo, the townhomes across the street there. And, uh, actually pulled, uh, his back hole over into the hole and, uh, uh, and between the back hole and the bobcat, he was killed, so, and, uh, decade ago or so.
Two decades ago, at least.
Yeah, it was. So, anyway, we heard all the ambulances going up and then I called and his dad called me back and said, "There's something really terrible that's happened." And I didn't know until that evening. It happened late on a, a Thursday or Friday afternoon. He was in a hurry, which always has an accident. So you know that, uh, the river bottoms where we're building now and where we built Spanish Trails, and we bought part of that from Spanish Fork City, was in a hundred-year flood plain. Just so you know it, okay? So the whole west side over here, much of that was in a hundred-year flood plain. So when people get up and talk about hundred-year flood plains, we address that in the state of Utah all over. This is not a major issue that we can't take care of because we work with the Corps of Engineers and we do a lot of different things. There is a tremendous history in this piece of property. And that is, unless I was going to get something out of integrity of where we talked, and there will be a couple of current or former council members come forward when we go to council that will talk about what was spoke, spoke about, and then the contracts that expired. You know, they had a contract that expired within a year or two. Uh, trying to force a build-out when the alls they had at the time was pretty well this, and then some built up in here and then going down to river bottoms. And, uh, I had some serious accidents, I've had three head injuries. And, uh, the, my last one was two years ago playing against Vladi Viskaka, and a Russian player, I played ball at Utah, and we have international tournaments, and I got hit in the head and I was in the hospital and about lost my kidneys. So I'm fortunate enough to be here, and so I'm an advocate and pretty, pretty formidable in the sense of what I think should be here because what we talked about. First of all, these are eight units to the acre. And the pump house down here is where they were talking about zoning something different in the future. But the pump house and above on this side could match what we're doing possibly here. We never entered in agreement with that, and I probably should have, and I could've got whatever I wanted because they wanted the twelve and a- I didn't come to them, they came to me, and it took six months' process. And Marie and a few people who were alive, former mayors that, you know, I knew very well, came to me, and so some of the other council members, Sheldon Gordon, people like this. And so, this piece here, if you take a look, we changed it when you saw it. Would you just stick up that plan that you currently had there? 'Cause I want to show you how we changed it, just so you know. So there's not fifteen, there is now eighteen, and these are luxury lots. And this is a cutout road right here, which comes here. It's no different than what they've come here, and these front face. And these will be homes that front face this way and beautiful in the backside. And these are, some of these are a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five to two-hundred feet long lots, okay?
What are they, square feet?
Um, square footage is, they'll, they'll be sixty to seventy feet frontage, and so you can add it up. They're going to be, you know, uh, maybe some of them eight thousand to ten thousand or eleven thousand, you know? I didn't know what square footage that counted all the time, but it seems like you're- I know, but that's okay, you can count.
I always understand what's going on.
But you can take a look at our product of what-
I did twelve thousand.
Yeah, you can take a look at what our product is that we have in those, and it's absolutely stunning. And that's all I can tell you. And, so I'm gonna ask you, ten years from now, thirty years ago, twenty-five years ago, to take a look through Spanish Trails, subdivision we did here with tower roofs and stuff, and take a look how it is today. Now take, imagine that and building something three times greater than any of that and having large lots and little larger homes. So you're gonna have seventeen luxury homes, eighteen right here. And we changed this, so when you come here, you change that. And so then, the, all of the townhomes on this side will face the rear, just the same way as these. So we have a set of townhomes. We actually end up taking six townhomes out and we only end up with seventy-four. Even though the density over here is eight, so-
Six, oh, you said seventy-four total units?
Seven, seven-four, yeah.
Fifty-nine townhomes?
Yeah, yeah, total. I mean, so, but if you take a look at what, what happens in Salt Lake and other golf course communities, they, they, they'll average sixteen, if they're townhomes, they average sixteen to twenty units an acre. And we're not even asking that, we're, we're not gonna do that. But, in the future, this piece here is so important to the river bottoms and to the golf course that when you have people come and play, and by the way, I got snooty enough, twenty years ago, I could belong to Riverside Country Club. So I could understand golf courses a little bit and properties and the values and whatnot we do. And so, I'm very interested in the sense that we're doing these, we're gonna have all of this lined here and take advantage of all of the golf course area. And this is going to be in perpetuity a beautiful-looking subdivision that will about match anything that you see in St. George, in Salt Lake, you know, and better than most of the subdivisions that are here in Utah County as far as homes go. And the quality certainly will be of the highest quality. And, uh, so it doesn't have quite this many, it changes out just a little bit, and we, and we face them this way and this way, and then we have another series that comes back this way. And, um, so again, we lose about six, we're down to about seventy-four. And, um, if we have to yield one or two, it's not gonna make the difference. But we wanted to do something that was spectacular. We're dealing with a pump house right here. And so, that will never, so here's one right here, and this, this, this one shows sixty-six. Yeah, show that one, you can show that.
Or do you want to talk about the pump house?
Well, the pump house, I just wanted you to realize this is a pump house here, and that's not going away. And we realize it, and we're willing to deal with it, and we'll do some increments here. We'll work the city, you know, do some, you know, planting and whatnot needs to be done to make the rest of the golf course. Now, if you know, the tee box is here and comes up here and comes to here, and you got the river here, okay? And we got a trail that's already here designated. And so we're participating in the trail that, where it's there, and you got the river. So, we're very, we're very, uh, conscious of what's going on, and we want to make this a landmark for Spanish Oaks Golf Course and for the people who live in the area, and for these people who buy homes, and for Spanish Fork itself. And we think we've taken a, a nice public golf course and we're lining it with a very nice, high-end product. So, the townhomes will be of the utmost quality and, uh, we'll be showing some of those. We sent things out to people, I don't know what went to all of them, and I, we get pamphlets out from Edge Homes to the DRC, and so I don't know if you guys got anything or what, but, uh, these are what we're doing. And, and the, the history of it, it's really interesting to me, so, um, of what's been said and, you know, and somebody told me, "Well, this is thirteen years ago." I says, "What's changed?" These haven't changed. This land hasn't changed, golf course hasn't changed. And I said, "But, you've only got one chance to do this golf course right." And I think I brought myself and, and Edge Homes, a competent, great developer and builder, to be able to build something that's going to be this, when people come here and golf, they're gonna go say, "Wow, that's really nice." 'Cause you're only gonna have a few places on this whole golf course where you're gonna have that opportunity. And it does mean something, it really does. And, uh, we're grateful that we traded the property. And you may say, "Why'd I trade ten point three acres from, and give them twelve point five?" Well, for the fact that I thought that I could capitalize and monetize myself here, and if I could get six to eight units down there, which was on the north side of One Hundred South, then I would be building a lot of places and we would be building less here. And, but yet they would be beautiful. So we only took the eight units because of what was here and what we thought could be built. And when you add two more lots here and you build, put the condos in, excuse, not condos, townhomes, inside the space, it works well. And so, um, why don't you go ahead and show that piece right there that you showed that has a little bit less? So this one here shows sixty-six units. And so if you take a look to all the frontage right here, and this fronts the tee box over here. And here's the, the trail right here. So you take a look here, we've switched this around a little bit since, uh, on the development, and we've got a nice little area right in here to be used, you know, for people if they want to, but they've got all the walking trail and stuff like this. The units across the street, uh, have their little, uh, subdivision that Datweiler did. And River Bottom Roads is here. We allowed the state and the city to stage here for several years. When they've needed something, you know, they, like, they staged all the, I think it was, Dave, was it sixty-inch pipe?
They did the mass.
Yeah, I can't remember, but they staged, so they, coming down out of Highway Six, they needed a place to put, you know, miles and miles of pipe because they couldn't leave it just on the highway. So they had to take X amount up every day. And so we allowed them to use our piece of land. And, uh, so, and then, also, they changed the direction of it because we were willing, just like we were willing with the city when we did Spanish Trails, to put the major water trunk and the major sewer trunk that goes up to the river bottoms in Spanish Trails. And, and two other developers below us didn't want to have it, and we said, "We'll do it." But, so here, here along this edge right here in the River Bottoms Road, you've got that major water trunk that'll go to the south and ends up going all the way down to St. George, you know, in the future, possibly. You know, but right now, they've got about ten, twelve, fourteen miles of it, and I don't know what they've done below, you know, and the rest. I think they're out of Spanish Fork now in Pas Basin so far. But that's a future use that comes out of actually strawberry, so, so they have, they have all the water shares for that. So I just want you to know, the cooperation of what we've done here for, you know, thirty years in Spanish Fork, uh, has always been favorable for the citizens of Spanish Fork, not just for us. And, uh, in fact, there were several problems, it could've been millions of dollars, and we fortunately didn't have to have the city pay penalties. But this, I think, is a great plan, it matches across the street. We're gonna have gorgeous places here, and we will work a design review with Dave, with Dave and his group, and, uh, what we plan on doing there. And of course, these are going to be luxury lots. And I think it's, you take a look at this hole, this will be one of the most beautiful holes as far as looking at this here in the hillside and the mountains at the same time, and then going back across the river and hitting from there. So we feel that this will be a, a real attribute to Spanish Fork City and the residents that live in this area. So, any other questions for me?
Yes, sir.
I'll tell one thing, here's the one thing. Okay, I know all about water and I own a lot of water shares. I trusted the city. I gave them twelve point five acre-feet of strawberry water, they gave me nothing. Only the fact that whatever we did, they would supply the water to it. And I gave twenty thousand dollars on top of it. So, is that apples to apples? Have we been a good, you know, developer, citizen, people who've lived here and stuff to make it better? I think yes. And so, I'm seventy-three years old. I think yes. And so I'm seventy-three years old. I've got maybe ten, fifteen years at the most. You know, I may die of a, you know, brain amurism, you know, tomorrow. I mean, that's just how it is. But this is my legacy and this is the legacy, legacy for my great-grandfather who did all of the, you know, he was one of the best, you know, there was in surveying, came with Brigham Young. And so this is a legacy for us and for Spanish Fork. You only got the one golf course. And so if we do this right, it's gonna be beautiful. Please don't worry about, you know, how much density, you know, there is in townhomes on this, this one. It's, it fits across what happened with other people across the street. But more importantly, we've got luxury lots, so.
Are these, are these units, uh, they are, this is a four-unit building?
Yes.
This is four?
Yeah, four, four, and three, and two threes.
And these?
Yeah, those are typical sixes. Which is what we do mostly with golf course property, six units.
Does each unit have a two-car garage and a driveway?
Yeah.
Looks up. Is this a, kind of like a parking island?
Yeah, well, what it, what it does is it allows, uh, it does allow a little parking area that can go in there or can be a beautification point, can be a separation. We'll, we'll work with the city on that to however the best direction they feel there. But we certainly do this and do this well. Uh, these cutouts that we've done, the cutout that we did here and the cutouts that we had right here that you saw right here, this is the newest hot item is to have that off of that road, so it stays off of River Bottoms. And you have this cutout and the garage is then, yeah, here. So this is a big thing. And Spanish Fork, this is something you wanna get used to it. You guys, you know, your planning commission, because it's its own road that fronts all of this and nobody drives out this way. They only have this and this and, this from here to here is about fifteen, you know, twelve, fifteen hundred feet. I mean, so it's a sizable city block or more, you know, and.
Are your townhomes two-story townhomes or are they single-story townhomes?
Well, they'll be, they'll probably be two-story, you know? I mean, this, I don't know, you know, uh, a single-story townhome here is gonna block a view here. These are not elevated. I mean, let's think that they're elevated or whatever. I don't know what they would want us to do, you know, and stuff like this. And I don't remember the elevation on this side here, if they were all singles or not. Uh, but, you know, we built twos and ones, so we just have to, you know.
Yeah, cause these are built, the, this is actually a genius way they did this because these are single-story with basement. These are two-story, so these see over the top.
Right.
And all of them right now have a beautiful view.
Yeah, but they're not gonna, whether it's single-story or not, the only people that's gonna have a view is gonna be these here. I, I can't help that. That's not, you know.
Right, I'm just asking.
You know, I, I wish I could make everybody happy, but they're not, they're gonna see the, through the golf course, through the trees and things like this, you know. But they've had the view of this for thirteen years of us not developing, but we have the right to develop just as they did and stuff, and they bought from Datweiler or whoever they bought their property from, so.
Right.
We'll be very conscious of it. I mean, I'll, I can do six, twelve pitches. I mean, I can make it so it's less, so it's not nine, twelve, or twelve, twelve, and take off six. Anybody that, that builds know it takes off six to nine feet, you know, so it's a big deal. And so we'll do lower pitch roofs with that. But I can't say that anybody's going to get a total view of the golf course, cause you're building them, you know, that's how it is. They're not gonna see through here, but there's no homes here. And it might be a few people, but they've got some sand issues and things like that in that area there, so.
Oh, uh, how much you are, are you affected by the pipeline that's been put through here?
The pipeline?
Right-of-way that is required for that?
We built this, this is built with that, with the right-of-way in there. So the right-of-way is coming.
It doesn't extend onto your property?
No.
As you have this designed.
Right, right.
So it's in the road?
It's, well, there's an X amount of road and we've dedicated, you know, part of the road, you know, that will be done and real paved, so, yeah.
And then the, there is an irrigation ditch that will remain there, the, the open well. Has it been?
Yeah.
Some of it's open.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's really pretty well pi, it's all piped. It's not open anymore. That was all piped when the, when the sixty and seventy-inch pipes went in. There is no irrigation ditch there.
There is a, uh, there is an outlet on that pipe.
Yeah.
That comes on to the golf course that, uh.
And it's, it's plenty deep. I, I was there and involved in the engineering the whole time.
Okay, but you are aware that that is something that you'll have to.
Oh, sure.
Address when you, I'm not sure exactly where that is.
Yeah.
In this area, but.
Yeah, we have, we have all that. And I thank you, John, for bringing that up because there, there are some connections there and we're very mindful of that. So, any questions for me at the time and as far as taking a look at the? Remember that it's more of, all of these are facing the golf course now, here. So you're gonna have a whole set of townhomes that face the golf course right there.
And it's your intention to match the density across the street to the north?
Yeah.
On that side?
Yeah, yeah. We asked for eight, eight, up to eighty. We're not gonna do eighty. We could. And we could make them smaller, but we're not. We're making them a nice size and they're gonna be very, you know, it's very elegant looking. And we're gonna make sure that the back, you know, the back exteriors look beautiful. Cause we want them to look verbal.
Do you have a feel for the finished square footage on the townhomes?
Uh, we'll estimate, what do you think without the basement? Like, we can have basements, we can have basements in this whole area. So, you know, we dug down eighteen feet and we only go six feet, you know, on a basement. And then we elevate up a couple, two, three feet, but, uh.
You, you didn't hit water?
No.
That's awesome.
No, we didn't. No, we didn't.
So did you dig in the area of these that are along the river?
Oh, yeah. We've dug, we dug twenty, twenty different holes. We had, we had the, uh, state engineer and federal guy come and take a look at all of it. And this right here is down to twenty feet deep. So it's not, so it's not like it's ten feet deep. It's like twenty feet deep, you know, it's a very big pipe.
So finished square footage is, that was mine?
Uh, you know, we'll be between twenty-eight and four thousand, you know.
On the townhomes?
Yeah. It's a very nice size.
Yeah.
Three-bedroom, four-bedroom, you know, that type of thing.
Appropriate.
So, yeah, and again, yeah, I mean, anything about Edge Homes and what we do is, what are you gonna find out? These, this is a very elegant subdivision and it will meet the city's needs and beautify the golf course, you know, as far as living on the golf course. Cause there aren't very many places other than up above where there's some other additional homes.
So will the, will the design on these that face the condos that are on the other side, will, will they be similar? Or will they, or will you make them?
Well, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna upgrade currently to what the standards are right now, you know, in the subdivision. But we certainly will be within the earth tones and whatnot, you know. When they bet that, we're, that was great. I mean, I was up there with, you know, Datweiler, you know, his dad a lot, so, you know. Yes.
Those will all be alley-oop too.
Yeah, they'll be what?
They'll be rear-loaded, so they'll.
So there's no, yeah, that's all rear-loaded. So there's no cars on the highway over here and stuff like that.
The, the front, the front doors will be facing that.
Similar to the ones growing?
Oh, yeah, they, the, they do match, so any of you, they do match exactly the straight C, you know, escape as you have right now. So they will look like they're facing each other, you know, and they'll have their front doors this side, you know, your front doors that side. We're very conscious of that. That's why we have been successful builders, you know. We want to keep your value, we need to, we have even more value now, having homes on the golf course. It's gonna happen and you may as well have the best do it. And I, I think we're the best, you know, so. And that's where we're at, you know, so. Any more questions? Joseph?
No, I appreciate your answer.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dick.
All right.
Any other discussion from missionaries before we go ahead and open for public hearing?
Ready for public hearing.
Let's, uh, start this public hearing with the same rules as expressed before. Three minutes per person. Please come up. Wait just a second here.
All right, Adam. Just acknowledge for the record, we did receive some written communication from the planning commission members. It was a suggestion as far as a city park. We did provide that to you before the meeting. It was from, uh, Ms. Shannon.
A question for you on this. Does the city have interest in acquiring this property and creating a park there?
Not that I'm aware of as far as our park's master plan.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you. Again, remind you of the three-minute rules. State your name, where you live. And if someone has already brought up what you were going to say, please, uh, please keep that in mind and we'll go through it as fast as we can. Thank you.
Um, I thought Spencer was going to go first, but being the gentleman that he is. I, my name is Shirley Durfee, spelled D-U-R-F-E-Y. And I live, live at, uh, three zero six five East River Bottoms Road in one of the townhomes, uh, that fronts there. That front River Bottoms Road. And, um, I, I think that we all knew that this was going to be an eventuality and we're not disputing that. Uh, uh, and I don't think that any of us are saying that we want our view of the golf course, uh, ruined because we really can't see the golf course from where we are. We can see it, but the river is there and the trees are there. And so, um, you have to get way up to the end by, uh, I think it's hole number one that, that you can even see really much of the golf course unless you take a walk over there, you know, something. And so I, but I think that most of us, uh, bought our property there with the idea that we had a nice view of the mountains, the windmills, the trees along the river. This year, they were beautiful, uh, in the fall. And so that, I think, is what we're talking about when we say we don't want the view blocked. Uh, is, is not really the golf course that we're talking about, at least not from where I am. I'm the third one up, uh, on the front. Uh, one of the things that, uh, uh, I, um, I wonder if this back row of townhomes, how many trees would have to be taken out along the river there to make that visible, to make the golf course visible? I mean, it would be visible, but, you know, through the trees, kind of. So I, I don't know if that would, um, necessitate taking out a lot of trees or not. And currently, there is no trail and, uh, installed there along River Bottoms Road until you get clear up to the church, across kind of from the church on whatever east that is. So even though it may be earmarked for a trail, there's no trail there as of yet. And, um, also, we are quite worried. I'm worried about my property value. Um, I'm seventy-two also and this home is the legacy that I'm gonna leave my children. And so if I go tomorrow or the next day or after this is built, I want to know that my property is not going to go down because these big, beautiful, uh, townhomes and individual homes have gone in making mine look like a little doghouse, so to speak. And, um, another thing that we, I think all of us are very, um, worried about is the traffic. River Bottoms Road, right now, if you were to go up there, you can just kind of pretty much drive down the middle. That's all there is. It's not really a two-lane road. And, uh, there, there are always cars out on the road parked. Uh, when the snowplow comes through, it pretty much just goes straight down the middle. And, um, as you get farther down onto River Bottoms Road. Now, it's a little bit better down here because when strawberry water users came in and did their giant pipeline, uh, they had to resurface and redo that road. But then as you get going down clear towards town, uh, it's a disaster. It's curvy, you know, it turns off this way to go to those new townhomes and down to that intersection, kind of. But if you go around this way to come out on about Third South, the trees grow over, the brush grows over, the, you know, along the canal, it's, it's bad. This would have to, with the increased traffic that this would bring, it, River Bottoms Road would have to be done something with. That's just all there is to it. Because with that much traffic, there's only two ways to go in, or three ways to go in and out of there. One is to go clear over to Powerhouse Road and up onto Highway six and there's no light or anything up there. The other one is to go up the big hill at the end there, whatever it's called. Thirty-four fifty, yeah. And again, there's no light there. And, uh, there's getting to be a lot of traffic at Go Hotel, you know, I'm probably, I'm hurrying. And so we're really concerned, the other way to get out is River Bottoms Road. And, and to go downtown, and it's, it's a big, big old mess. And we're also, I am also worried about the construction. Uh, we went through this with, uh, strawberry water users and all of their big equipment coming in to get those pipes and put those pipes in, and, uh, it really shook up our houses with all that big equipment. And, um, I probably missed something, but.
Thank you, Shirley.
Thank you.
Spencer?
Spencer, you're famous. You've gotta follow that up, man.
Spencer Hickon. I live in that community along the back row. Um, obviously like Shirley said, we've known this is coming and we bought it, I, I bought my house. I loved that we were just down there tucked away, nothing around, but I knew at some point development was coming. Our, our biggest fear was the, the type of development that came in. Um, the concerns that go along with that are, uh, and it is, it is density to, to an extent. Not so much just because there's a lot of houses, but it's all the other things that that affects. Uh, you know, the, the ripple effect that comes out of that is the road, uh, that makes sure utilities are, are good enough. Uh, parking is currently a big issue in that area. Adding more homes, we, we, that, I, it needs to be looked at. Um, the, the best example I'm, I can think of, cause it does seem like all of Utah's is blowing up right now. There's growth everywhere. Uh, it seems like we're putting a lot of stuff in and then thinking about the after-effects a few years down the road and, and trying to make it work. Uh, you know, the, an example is Saratoga Springs. When they had the fire a couple of years ago, they've had, they're within the, the top ten biggest growing cities in Utah. They had the fire and Redwood Road is their main road, sort of like, not a great comparison, but just like our River Bottoms. That was their way out. And when Redwood Road closed during the evacuation, a lot of people just had to turn around, go back home and hope the fire didn't make it. Luckily, it didn't. Um, that's the kind of thing that, our, our concern in, in our neighborhood is, is making sure that all the, the, the ripples that are caused by, by adding more development get thought about. Um, you know, I know one of the things that I've, I've had people I've worked with and, and friends in, in development, the one thing, a tool that they like to use and, and approach cities about is the, a smart growth self-assessment for rural communities. It's something, uh, on the EPA's website. Uh, that helps think about the big picture and, and what's coming and make sure, you know, we're, we're on the same page. Make sure it's done right and make sure we don't have to redo things and rethink things five years down the road. Um, you know, do it right the first time, get it done and, uh, make everything better quality instead of quantity. So, thank you.
Thank you, Spencer.
My name is John Forsloff and I live on thirty-one ninety-one East River Bottoms Road. My last name is F-O-R-S-L-O-F. And may I use your pointer?
Please do.
Oh, that's theirs.
It's ours.
Oh, okay.
Public, public use.
Yep.
Yes, you did.
I like plan number two. I don't know, you can flip it to that, uh, screen. Yes.
If that plan isn't gonna, we're not doing that plan anyway. We're not, no, no, we're not doing the other plan, which way the home, the townhome's in.
Okay.
That's, that was original and then we sent this other plan to.
Well, in, in my opinion, uh, for what it's worth, I like, uh, this plan here. I trust that these homes are all facing River Bottoms.
Correct.
With the garages on this side, and I see that these are gonna be, there's gonna be a lot of trees taken out. I don't see any play area. When you have young families, where's the play areas, you know, for kids to play? Living on River Bottoms, uh, on our townhomes, we have, we have a basketball court and then there's a play area, uh, in the back of these townhomes right here. And I think that was by requirement, but I don't see any, you know, play areas for little kids. Uh, and then I trust, if you want view homes on, on, along here, you're gonna be taking out a lot of trees and maybe getting right down to the riverbank almost. Uh, for those, it's a small creek, but, you know, it's, I guess during, uh, uh, springtime when the water starts flowing and the snow starts melting more, it gets more flooded there. But, uh, I'm glad to see, you know, the development in a way, uh, to, and I. To, and I like this little turnaround here, entrance and entrance here, but the little turnaround. I don't know where your lighting is gonna be in here, you know, is it all gonna be dark? You have to have certain number of lights, do you not, in a development like this?
We'll have more than you have.
Pardon me?
We'll have more lights than you have.
Okay. Yeah, we don't have a lot. It's kind of a dark area. But that, I'm glad to see still the development. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
Oh, when will it be done?
Well, that depends on these guys.
Oh, well, I mean, how long will the property take?
Well, let me explain to you. We build twenty homes at a time. Calculate that out, within five, six to seven months max, this could be built.
Okay. Well, again, I like this plan here because it doesn't have all those little.
Can you ask, can I answer his question? He asked whether there'd be a play area. We've taken this lot on the next plan and turned it this way and we've got a play area in here.
Or do you?
Yeah. And so that's where we're, and down here, we're gonna request the city because there's this excess land here where the shed, where the pump house is, that we could fence this and we could also put another little play area right here. So.
How are you gonna keep the children out of that?
Out of what?
How are you gonna keep the children out of that river?
Let's, 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 we'll do that. We're in public hearing now and so we'll take the comments and then we'll answer those after the comments, so.
Once these.
Your name, please?
Oh, Manuela Nguyen Schwanter.
Wow!
N-E-U-N.
Johnny, you didn't get that?
No, I didn't.
Yeah, so I, I'm living on the backside of the townho- homes and I remember when, I don't know what was going on a few years ago, but we had a lot of damage in, well, not a lot, it's exaggerated, but we had, how's it called, cracks in our houses and stucco and so on and so forth. And I'm afraid when this project is going to start, we, who's gonna come up for new damage? Who, who's gonna pay for that damage? Because it's gonna happen, because it's gonna shake and, and there's so much going on with all those backhoes and whatnot and it really does affect our homes. So.
So when they came and installed the pipe, your home shook and you had cracks?
Extremely harsh. It was almost like an earthquake. Okay, I'm, I'm not sure about the engineering, so this is just what I was wondering about.
What, what was the pipe, Sean? Some sort of utility infrastructure?
Water.
Oh, it's actually, it's actually, it's actually Central York's Water Conservancy District. It's constructing a high-pressure line that'll go all the way to Genola.
Yeah, and then the traffic, I go to work every day and I'm just also concerned about backup traffic.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Rachel Summers. I live on River Bottoms Road in the single-family home that faces this development. Our lot is on a half-acre lot and if you can see, it's a little deceiving because what's developed of our yard is not the full acreage. It kind of extends to that tree and then out more. So even though these are considered luxury lots, I'm concerned that even the single-family homes are very narrow in space and will necessitate a high elevation because of that. Of course, we love where we live. Before we bought, I looked very closely at the River Bottoms vision that the city put together because I wanted to know what their vision for this land was. Now, we do have the townhomes and my neighbors over there, technically, the River Bottom boundary is right on that road. So everything across the road is still in that, that River Bottom district. And I just wanna read something from the vision that I wanted to remind the city about that's important to the city, to the community and to the residents. It says, this is from their publication. "If or when development occurs, agrarian and rural character can be preserved with, with small-scale farming operations, right-to-farm areas, larger residential lots, shared open spaces such as pastures, arenas and greenways, compatible architectural design, cluster development and observing historic development patterns." So my point here is just that even if development is to occur in this space, I do, I do not believe that high density is the way to go with this. He's asking for R-three. So even though, you know, we've seen this plan, we've seen another plan, there's apparently another plan we haven't seen, but we need to assume that if that zoning passes, the maximum units could be up to a hundred and twenty units. And I, I'm very concerned about that. I don't think it matches the, the rural character of Spanish Fork. I consider the River Bottoms to be the crown jewel of not Spanish Fork, but Utah County. I moved from northern Utah County where Edge Homes is building like crazy. There's an insatiable need for development in some parts of Utah County and this part of Spanish Fork is different and that's why I love it. And that's why I wanna be here. And I don't think that Spanish Fork should be trying to develop these high-density areas and give up something that's so special to the community. And if you wanna know more about what the community thinks about it, go to that vision document or the survey. I had to spend some time reading and I won't waste my time now going through that, but it's incredible how the, the community values what we have here. And if we set a precedent by developing high density within the River Bottoms District, even whatever agreements or whatever, if you set that precedent, there's gonna be other developers that are gonna point to this just the same way and say, "Well, you allowed it here, so it's a neighboring property and we can do it too." I have, I have a lot of concerns about that, preserving that, that uniqueness and rural character that Spanish Fork has to offer. Mentioned the, the traffic. I, if you go at night, both sides of the street are completely packed. Let alone a snow event. It's completely like, it's just, I, I don't know. The, the garbage trucks use our driveway to do about a five-point turn to turn around on River Bottoms Road. It's narrow. And if you put, even if there are single-family homes, there's gonna be cars lined both sides of that. The, the community that we're talking about that already exists, there's about fifty units there. If you, there you go. So if you compare that to a hundred and twenty potential units with, and all of them have two-car garages and, and driveway parking. If you compare that, where are all those cars gonna go?
We're not doing a hundred and twenty yet. Stop saying that.
We understand. We understand what you're saying. Thank you.
And so, lastly, I just wanna say that this was kind of mentioned, but I'd also be really interested to know about a traffic study of some sort to know how that would affect this area. I have concerns about emergency vehicles as well, the, the width of River Bottom Road. Even if they were to make improvements here, it doesn't, there's only one or two ways out. And so that's gonna be a major concern, I think, of the amount of cars. If you're talking about that many units, I would count on at least two unit, two cars per unit. And that's gonna add a lot of traffic to a very rural area of the city. So I have more to say, but I, I appreciate being able to share with you tonight and hope that you will take the recommendation of the DRC and staff and deny high, high-density residential zoning for this area because I don't think it's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Jonathan Summers. And I just wanted to reiterate, I, I do agree with you that this is a special area. I love, I love your land and I really appreciate the River Bottoms. I, I would if I could. I didn't know about it. I just, I just got here. I really apologize. So I live right across the way, a little over a half an acre, along with all the other larger houses, et cetera. I feel spoiled and, and probably my house should not be part of this. But as per the city and why they wanted to deny it is because this is right in the River Bottoms. In two, twenty-eighteen, we decided, hey, this is a special place. We took community input. Never did I see anywhere on the input from the community, hey, let's build high-density housing. That's what R-three really is. And it is, I mean, it's a hundred and twenty.
We're not building a hundred and twenty, so you need to stop saying that. We're, we're under, we're right now about seventy-four.
There's nothing that's, that we're stopping.
Yes, there is. But we're not in agreement.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, so anyway, so, so the biggest thing here is we needed to follow the recommendation to deny due to flooding. Because in nineteen eighty-three and eighty-four, this was completely underwater, underwater completely. So yes, FEMA has, has, has marked it as flood zone, probably because it flooded. No?
On the water commission.
So, so how, how deep, sorry, how deep was this when the, when it did flood in eighty-four?
It did not flood there. It did not flood that property.
Oh, that particular property did not flood?
That property did not flood.
Okay. So.
I know, I don't want that to be misunderstood. It did not flood on that, on that piece. It flooded the golf course.
Okay. So how far, how far did the flood go?
Uh, it flooded where, where it actually broke through was right in this area, along here and it flooded a little on this area and back towards the pond and then down the fifth fairway.
Okay, so that was.
It did, it did not come.
John, hasn't it, I understand it is, hasn't the river been dredged also since that time?
Yes, but it's also filled in. And, and I don't wanna take up this time. That's, that's, this is, this is a public hearing. But I don't, but I don't want the, I don't want that to, to go on that that flooded because that particular area did not. This particular area is, that we're talking about tonight did not.
Yeah, I, I'm just going, I, I wasn't, I wasn't here in nineteen eighty-four.
I wasn't.
And I know some other family members that were here and they said it flooded. So I'm just going off of what they said. So I apologize. But, but the final thing is, since the River Bottoms plan is not even like set in stone and approved, if we make a move on this and, and, and don't listen to the denial that's been proposed, we don't have an opportunity to fix this and make it right. This is like a one-time opportunity. The whole River Bottoms plan is very important. We're not talking about just this place, but, but the future of Spanish Fork. And I think, like my wife said, the crown jewel of Spanish Fork. This is an area that, it's, it's completely unique. It's really not set up for high-density housing. So, and, and for that, I, I hope you listen to the suggestions and deny.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, concerns? Saying none, we'll go out of public hearing and we'd like to address those things that have been brought up by the individuals. And we would go through these one at a time. Shirley Durfee talked about the view of the mountains and the trees, the trail. One thing that I would like confirmed with the city staff is, will there be a trail that is on that side of the river?
Is that on the, on the.
Or not? I, I mean, I don't know if there, maybe Mike, you could bring that up again and see if there's. Right now, the trail goes through the, through the park and then along, and then along the road, actually. Along Powerhouse Road. It's back up here and then up and across and goes across right there. It looks like it's dashed, which means that it may.
No, those are just trees. So it's the yellow along the River Bottoms and then along Powerhouse and through Kennedy Park. So there's not one through the golf course.
But is that part of the plan?
Along here, it's not planned to have a trail at this time. Okay. That was a question I had there on, on that.
What did the dashed yellow align to me along the road?
It's, there are different types of trails, different widths, so it's shared use trails. It'd be like the other trails you see along main roads.
We don't show a trail along River Bottoms Road, do I believe, right?
There's no trail.
We don't plan that that's not. Are you saying?
There's one shown on the plan now.
On the city's plan?
On the city's plan.
A trail along River Bottoms Road. You're saying, I'm not, I'm not arguing at all. I'm just trying to make sure.
And that's why I ask is that there's, it was mentioned several times about a trail along there and I wasn't aware of it. So I don't think that's on the city's plans at this time for a, for a trail to be there.
Maybe just to clarify what I would think would happen when we really get into the nuts and bolts of a, a more detailed development proposal. I think that's something that we would absolutely study. And we'd have to determine whether we wanted a trail along the river here like we've done elsewhere on the north side of the river or along River Bottoms Road. We'd have to talk about exactly what the cross-section from River Bottoms Road would look like. And a handful of different things like that. I guess also I would say that that probably wouldn't be influenced by the zoning of the property. So those things would come, whether it's twelve thousand square foot lots or townhomes.
Just addressing the, the things that were brought up. Anything else that I missed?
Finished, uh, how, how wide will the road be finished? Because the, the developer finishes their side of the road. So how wide will that turn in?
No, it'll, it'll look like that-ish. The road will be the same. The planner and stuff would kind of be dependent just because the topography's unique.
Okay. Which is maybe a little misleading because just half of that would be done along the majority of the frontage. Is that how you see that actually made?
Yeah, like there wouldn't be a wall in people's front yards. It, it's not a one-size-fits-all plan. The idea is you have one lane each direction with the shoulder and then curving other. Beyond that, if there's a river or a hillside, we obviously aren't gonna dig a hill to build a trail into the hill, so.
Which, half of this would be in addition to half of what exists there now, but for where the road improvements have already been made.
Right.
So nobody should expect probably the full curb-to-curb development to happen when this property develops.
Why?
Because this property owner does not control that frontage there.
Right, oh, right, yeah. But on their side of the road, it would be finished, just like this side is finished.
Yeah, just clear about that.
And you'll notice that this home right here does have sidewalk already, they've already done that a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, they have it nicely finished.
Spencer asked about utility infrastructure. Is it adequate? And then he also asked, actually, Mike, Mike or Dave, you might speak to the forethought that goes into ensuring a development is we plan for it, impact fees, traffic studies for the roads for future plans. Just so that, I think it's a good time to educate people that it's, we actually, the city staff, this is what you do is you think ahead twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years. We as a planning commission try and think ahead on general plans, so does the staff. You might wanna speak to this.
Yeah, I'd have to speak from a couple of different perspectives. Absolutely, when it comes to planning, provide power, water, sewer, all of those types of things. That happens well in advance of the development of any particular property. We've essentially planned for the ultimate build-out of the city with the idea that whether it's small pieces of infrastructure that get built with development or bigger things that the city builds like a new wastewater treatment plant, that we do stay ahead of the growth that happens in Spanish Fork with a lot of different things. And yet there are things that we do not get ahead of. We cannot keep ahead of increased traffic. So for example, as was mentioned here with River Bottoms Road, and I'll candor whether this property develops or not, there will be more and more cars on River Bottoms Road. I would say even if development in Spanish Fork continues to happen or not because of growth in surrounding communities, traffic will continue to increase and just because of how roads typically are built, which is by development, which.
So by design, due to, due to budgetary constraints within the city, we don't pre-build all the roads, right?
Exactly. So typically there are situations that.
Otherwise, our taxes would be through the roof. We would be the highest taxed city in America if we did that.
So things get worse before they get better is how, but some infrastructure things happen. You know, other things like parks and schools, we coordinate closely with the school district. They understand kind of where our paths of development and growth are heading and, and plan to, to keep pace with that relative to the services they provide. I, I think, that I know of along the west edge front today, I think communities do a very, very good job of trying to keep up. But we're near in what quite probably is one of the faster-growing counties in, one of the faster-growing states in the United States. Absolutely, there are challenges. There's good and I would say certainly bad that comes from the pace of growth that we're experiencing now. But certainly when it comes to utilities, we're ahead of it.
I'd like to, right now, there was some discussion by the Summerses about the flood issue here. And I'd just like to reiterate that the place that was most worried about was about right here. This, this green, this is the, the. about was about right here. This, this green, this is the, the T-box, and it goes across right there, and that's why there's material that's been taken out of there. At one time, there was a real worry, it did not flood here, but it was one of the low spots, and the city came in, and this is part of the spot, they brought in some, some, uh, fill to put along here, and this is the road that they used to come down, and to place it along here, and if you'll go down a little bit, Mike. Uh, the bridge right across here, uh, so this is just a little bit of that, and a lot of material was brought in here, built this bank up and that roadway that is used by the golf course to go around without being on the golf course, right there. And this is where, this is where it broke through, is right here, and it flooded down this way, towards this pond. And then it also flooded a little in here, went out into here, and went right down. The topography of this is that this is actually downhill, and it went down here towards this green. And so, the flood took place here, and then it went through at that, this is, this is a guy that, uh, still owns the property and owned it at the time. It went through these fields and back towards the river. And so, the flood area was there. The reason that this is in that floodplain is obvious. You have a river right there. The floodplain is going to be so many feet on either side of the river, regardless of whether it's gone there or not. And a hundred-year flood doesn't mean that it'll happen every hundred years. It means that it has a chance every year one-hundredth, okay? And so, it could happen, and Spanish Fork River floods about every thirty years. And so, we really dodged a bullet in two thousand eleven. We had more snowpack than we did in eighty-three or fifty-two, and if it had have been a little bit different, we would have flooded again and possibly worse. Uh, it was mentioned that the river has been, was dredged, it was dredged by Spanish Fork City to try and avoid any more problem from the flood, or from the high waters of eighty-three. They got in a lot of trouble for doing that because they didn't check the Army Corps of Engineers before they did that, and so they had to make sure that they put that back into the same way that it was. So, the widow, willows and the stuff that's along the banks, you, the, the city or no one else is allowed to touch that now. You can remove things if it's a, if it's a, an imminent problem, like a big beaver dam that sometimes happens in here. But other than that, that has to be left as a natural river. And there are several places all the way down to the lake that have some obvious problems, and it's kind of hard to take care of. But, from right here where it goes underneath the river bridge here, this is all area that could be impacted if we have that hundred-year flood. But, in eighty-three, this, this area did not flood. So, that's the comment that I have. Uh, there were a couple of other things.
Fascinating.
I didn't think he really was the water commissioner, but now I believe him.
I have, on my license plate, it says commish commish, okay? I'm retired, I don't do that anymore. I worked for the state engineer. Was present for both, both of the things that I just talked about. Uh, there were a couple of other things here that I think that we have, uh, the trees, obviously, that will be something that will be, uh, part of the, part of the, of the project, if the project were to go forth, and, uh, those trees could only be removed if they don't, you know, if they have any impact on the integrity of the bank of the river, that could have an impact. I don't think anybody is really in favor of taking trees out. Um, the, uh, was there a couple of other things here that we haven't talked about?
Amenities. So, John, John talked about amenities, and
Yes.
There's just, the plot's not even close to where it would need to be for us to start getting into those particulars, but that would definitely be part of future discussions, is having an actual preliminary plat that is consistent with whatever zone he's actually asking for, which we currently haven't seen. We don't even know the road widths in there. We don't know the lot sizes. They're not called out on the plat. It's, right now, it's just a, it's a preliminary drawing, but that would be part of the future discussion.
But thanks for bringing it up because, because...
That's what is, that's what this is.
Can I suggest something?
Of course.
I, I know it's a public discussion.
Come up to the microphone, please.
I was thinking along the creek area, um, or the river, uh, putting up a fence, I'm thinking of little kids that are in the backyard, so to say, uh, to put up some kind of a restraining, you know, wall, or fence metal, or whatever, uh, so little kids don't fall down in that creek. Just a thought.
It's a good thought, but it is kind of, it be, it becomes a hazard in and of itself, in that sometimes you can't get out. A fence has a tendency to work both ways.
Yeah.
So, you have to be careful of that, and if, if the river became an issue and needed to be built up, or, uh, the integrity of the bank was going to be, uh, in peril, you have to get to it. Uh, you have to get down to the river to get there, and so fences usually aren't too encouraged, uh, along the riverbanks. Uh, and, you know, uh, I think it's a great safety item. Uh, I grew up in this area. I understand.
It's a well project.
Yes.
Someone, uh, brought up about, uh, let's see, uh, property value, Shirley brought up about property value.
Yes, Shirley.
So, typically, so I'm not an expert like the commissioner over here, but from what I've seen and heard from more experts is, well, I'll just tell you, my father-in-law goes into neighborhoods and tries to find the smallest house in the nicest neighborhood, and, uh, and he gets great property values from, from that. So, tip, so typically, it'll increase your property value.
Sounds like financial advice, Shauna.
Right.
Just kidding. I'm just kidding.
I am not, I am not a professional.
Was it fifty-three units in the current townhouses?
Okay.
Okay. Do we know that acreage of the, that the fifty-three townhouses sit on currently?
Give us a second.
Okay.
Yeah, I like what...
Use the other one, the white one.
I like what Joseph said before, which is, look at the other houses in the area. If you look, if you take the general plan, you look at our house, it's half acre. If you look at the lots to the west of us, they're also half, half acre. It's gonna very much impact not only us, but all the houses along the ridge and all the other houses up there as well, so.
It, it could. If it's, if it's high-quality building all along, it should be...
Any other discussion? Any other questions with, for staff? Joseph?
Jonathan, so I actually was looking at the plat.
Yeah.
I'm not seeing that it's separately, there aren't separate lots next to you that I'm seeing. Is this not right?
Yes.
You would know better than I would.
It's ha, it's not, it, it doesn't belong to me, it belongs to somebody else, but there are half-acre lots.
I'm sorry, they're not yet. They're in the process of being subdivided. They've, I think they've made formal application now, and you may see that next month.
Is that on this property?
To the, to the west.
The west.
So, I believe it's three or four all together.
Over here.
Four all together. In addition to the Summerses, right there.
Right here, like over here.
Yeah. So, this area, this area between this house and you guys.
Yes.
Yeah.
And Summers, you guys are, hi, I didn't know, I'd like to turn on. All right. You guys are this, you bought from Scott Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you want to introduce yourself as their neighbor now?
Okay. Any other discussions? Staff, any? How much?
Probably give or take eighty.
About eight acres.
And this is how many acres?
That's the common area, the, everything, not just the structures.
And you may, and you may scroll down, or, uh, back up just a little bit. I think they would talk, they talked about the basketball court and the common area.
Your call.
That's right there, right?
Yes.
The playground is over...
Which is, which is a nice place.
Playground's right there.
Oh, this one behind.
That's, yeah, this is their basketball court, and then their playground's right there.
And some, and some common area.
It should be pointed out, this is part of the River Bottoms area. Those townhouses across the street are not part of the River Bottoms.
Vision.
Yeah.
Yeah, correct.
So, this area that we're talking about is, is in that area.
Right.
Also, the townhomes across the street, those were approved as part of one larger project that included the single-family homes up above. So, that's why
Oh.
that particular density is there. It was spread out over that bigger area.
Not unlike what the current applicant, applicant is trying to do.
You have the same philosophy, I think, uh, doesn't play back then.
Can you, I'm, can I ask a question?
Come on up to you.
Only if we know the answer.
So, Canyon Crest, can you kind of see the blue outline?
So, the, so the River Bottoms, where I live right now, that was part of an agreement to, for up on Canyon Crest, right?
Canyon Glen and Canyon Crest were part of the same development, yes.
Oh, okay. I, so, that was granted because that was, there were single-family homes up above, or?
It was all approved together.
It's, so it was just, but it wasn't necessarily cause and effect, or something. Okay. Well, that's interesting. I don't think we ever do that as an association.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? Staff, is there anything from you that we have missed?
Did we answer your questions?
Did we answer, yeah, the...
Did we answer your questions, I guess?
Any questions?
River Bottoms demarcation line, Dave, maybe speak to that.
Um, yeah, I really appreciate what's been mentioned about what the city's been working on, like I said earlier, for a number of years. Um, and, uh, absolutely, I think all of the documents that we've produced to date identify this property as being part of the study area for the River Bottoms. Um, nothing has been finalized or adopted relative to what might be part of some specific conservation effort for the River Bottoms, using any of the tools that we've talked about or anything like that. Um, for purposes of talking about preserving the River Bottoms, um, I'm leery of, um, making a connection between this property and what we're trying to do elsewhere in the River Bottoms. Because of how that will be viewed, I'm afraid by other property owners in the River Bottoms, um, they, I'm afraid, will feel like, well, you allow development here, so why not elsewhere? Um, and that's a particular concern for me, because like we said at the onset, um, I think a decision to develop this property was made a decade before we started talking seriously about developing the River Bottoms. Um, so, I'll be sounding like I'm speaking out of both sides of my mouth, but what's been said...
It did sound that way, Dave, just so you know. You accurately summarized what you were doing. It's great.
Um, and I hope you understand maybe the concern that I'm, I'm throwing out there, where I think there's an obligation, and I'm just speaking for myself. City attorney, city manager, others might have a different, uh, perspective on that. Um, so, it's a matter of reconciling those two things.
And you, you, you left a sentence unsaid, and you think there's an obligation...
To accommodate some type of development here. So, that, and that is where, for me, reconciling that with the idea that the golf course and this property indeed are entirely en masse part of some conservation effort, you know, that we're working on with the River Bottoms.
Isn't our, the question is, is R3 zoning the right kind of, uh, the right kind of accommodation for that area? Is it the right?
What were your challenges?
Is it the right development?
To Shauna's point, what were the original tallies? You said R3 would be a total of X number of units, and R4 would be Y number of units, and...
I believe that's in here.
That's ten point three units to the acre times the density that's called out in the zoning code. So, it's plus or minus one probably for each of those, depending on...
Square feet.
Exactly.
Right at the, right at the start of the meeting, you said like R16, fifty-two, R18, thirty-nine, nine was thirty-five, twelve was twenty-six.
Twelve, twenty-six, nine.
She got it right.
Michelle, keep going.
Fifty-two, thirty-nine, thirty-five, and twenty-six.
For which? Fifty-two, thirty-nine, what was fifty-two? What zone?
R six, R sixteen.
R one-six?
R one-six.
And then what was the R3, Michelle? Did you get it?
It would, um, that was the maximum, and I keep someone said that.
Well, R4 is higher.
Yeah, to consider R4, it'd be a hundred and eighty, let's just say, eighteen times. I'm sorry, R4 is now twenty, twenty times ten.
And R3 is twelve times?
Correct.
In general, uh, as I, as I've had a chance to look at this and be a little bit familiar with it over the years, there were, there were certain, uh, when the land trax, transaction took place, there were certain things that were understood, and I understand that contracts expire, and I understand the legal terms of it and things like that. But to just say that this particular parcel of ground fits the rest of the River Bottoms, I'm not so sure it does, because of the, the proximity to the other units that are higher density, and you have a definite boundary of the golf course, you have a boundary of the, uh, of the pump house that's there now. Uh, there will not be any more, uh, development, uh, beyond what we're talking about with a few lots, maybe the four lots on the other side, on this entire road, uh, unless something changes with the vision. Uh, that's not been finalized yet. We're talking about something that is still nebulous. Uh, it's, it's pretty well-written down, and I suppose that we're moving towards that vision, but it hasn't happened yet. And to make assumptions that it will are probably premature as well. What I'm a little bit concerned about is not fleshing that out. You know, I would like to be able to tell Mr. DeVano that this is exactly what we want, or this is not going to fit in with what is proposed for that area. I think, uh, what we've been talking about for the River Bottoms is in the wide scope of the River Bottoms. Uh, this narrow sliver of land, uh, it's never been productive. Even when it was farm ground, it wasn't very productive, because it was only watered when there was enough water. And there was never enough water. There's never enough water in Utah County, and so that was one of the sacrificial lands, if you will, of the old Jex Farm that that was a part of. And eventually, that was sold and part of the rest of the land, and so it's kind of that piece of ground that no one has really known what to do with. And so, uh, I understand, and I, and, and actually, I think that the direction that the applicant is going is a pretty good direction, and I think it fits in well with what's already there, to tell you the truth. Uh, however, there's the underlying factors of the planning commission making decisions at this time that we may not be able to make yet until we have all of the information. I'd like to get them, get these things decided as soon as possible and get that decision so that the developer, uh, the applicant, I'll say, I don't know that developer is the right term to use right now, has that opportunity to do what he wants to do, or at least know what exactly he is able to do there. I think that he has some good arguments for the things that he would like to do. I understand that there are some issues there that the city may not be in total agreement with. Uh, but I don't feel, I don't feel like I'm the person that can sit here and make that decision this evening. So, that's just, that's my position at this time, and I would like some more fleshing out of it. I don't, I don't know that fleshing out is really the right term. I think, I, I think that we need to make sure that, uh, the city council, uh, and, to tell you the truth, the legal department of Spanish Fork City and Mr. DeVano understand each other.
Yeah, John, and I haven't interrupted, other than have just a little conversation here in the back. The reason that this was fit the process is not only the density here, but the back, yeah, okay, sorry, yeah.
The, the reason that we, we felt this when we first talked about this with the city, uh, no way were we gonna do anything where they just said, okay, you go ahead and we'll give you twelve acres, and then we'll give you ten point three, DeVano, and you just decide, you know, at the time. There were a lot of things talked about, and, uh, because I'd been here for a long time, I honored, and there's no way that we were gonna be able to develop it within the timeframe that they wrote at the time, which was ridiculous. But it's okay, you know? But here's, here's the deciding factor. You have this, and you have all golf courses. Nowhere else in here, or down here, is a land that's on, locked in on the golf course. This is entirely locked in on this golf course. This is going to be an incredible addition to these homes, these homes. Nobody's property value here is affected. If you're worried about it being affected, come to me, and I'll buy it, you know, and we'll go from there. That's how, how, that's how I know we will do a fabulous project. That's how, how that, that's how I know we will do a fabulous project for the city. It's for us. It's for all these people here. And when it's done, I've been through this many times with people coming in and saying, I can't see this. I can't help them that they bought a piece of land over here and we own a piece of land here. We will try to be as sensitive as we can. We will not take down any tree that doesn't need to be taken down in building. We love trees and they're very important for our environment and we're very environmental conscious about that. But again, we are totally locked in and that's why this piece is different than any other piece on the river bottoms. You've got a chance to do something beautiful. I think what we've presented is beautiful. We'll show you plans again when we come, things like this. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Mike, will you show the white plat, the one with the white background, the plat with the white background concept?
The latest one.
So, so my comments, my comments are similar to John's where, um, I think, I think as long as the development. And I think it's thoughtful that the development mirrors, mostly mirrors that to the north. So my, my advice and what I'd like to see happen, if, if I was in charge or what I'd like to see happen is. That Vic, you go back to the drawing board with this as me saying, I believe and we'll wait to see what the vote is. But I think it's worth the F, I think it's worth the cost and the time to dial in this, uh, dial it in, get it to meet city code. Uh, meet city standards. Uh, I wanna see elevations. I wanna know the floor, I wanna know the floor plans of these townhomes. I wanna know the minimum square footages. I wanna know the actual lot sizes. I like, and again, my instruction is to continue to be thoughtful about mirroring what's to the north. Because again, I think that's, that's good, um, that's a good distribution of property rights where everyone knows what's happening and it's consistent with what, with what has already happened. But my, my feedback is to move forward with this and get us something that's a, that goes in with the preliminary plot approval with the zone change. That way we can, we can bind you to the number of lots and we can bind you to a playground and a, uh, whatever else we're gonna, and fences and, and things like that.
I mean, we're saying right now, we're not doing a hundred and twenty.
Well, and we know, and we know how to also make sure you can, and it's, we agree, agree with you, yeah.
Hey, I, I, oh, go ahead. Did you have something to add?
I was gonna say one more thing. I was gonna say one more thing. I also feel that the river bottoms demarcation line can and should be the golf course. I don't see that as a problem for the city moving forward. I think it's appropriate. And I think, and, and going back to, I think you being partnered with Edge is a great thing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I do think they have a great reputation and had you come in here with a different builder, we may have a different opinion.
Sure.
But I would like to see something very, very high end on this section. Otherwise, it's a total missed opportunity for everybody. And I agree with you. It could be something beautiful for decades and it could be something people look at and are really proud of for this, for the community. So do it that way.
Be nice to have people cheer when I birdie that hole.
Have you ever birdied?
Now, well.
Besides kicking it in, John.
Well, foot wedges is as good as any other club I've got, Mike. Right?
Dave?
Just to re-agree, uh, I think the options that the commission has tonight, three, like usual. You can recommend the approval of the zone change with, uh, literally whatever zoning district you'd like to include as part of that recommendation. You can simply recommend that the applicant's proposal be denied or you can continue the proposal. So for example, and I don't know at all if this is what you were talking about, Congressman, I don't think it is, but you could continue this item. To give the applicant an opportunity to prepare a preliminary plot application to touch on all the details you just spelled out to be brought forth. Again, back to a planning commission meeting at a future date where the zoning can be, uh, once again considered in that meeting. Um, those are your options as I see it, so.
Did Michelle and Sean, you wanna talk to us about what you think?
I'm definitely on the same page, um, as John Joseph's remarks. What I, what's the struggle for me is that you do have right across the street, you have those townhomes, um, the fifty-three units on eight acres. Um, what's being proposed is in line with that, plus the single family, uh, homes. Um, I think where the sticking point is, is that right now it's officially in that river bottoms vision area. Um, but I, I, I agree with Joseph. I would like to see, I'm not ready to, um, make the recommendation for a zone change. But I would be open to exploring, um, some more detailed plans that you have.
What about recommendation that you would approve with, if you approve the plan with your, with the new coordinate security on lots?
There, there is one other thing that we failed to talk about a little bit and that is that it is within that floodplain that was designated. Uh, by the Corps of Engineers. And for that to be removed, uh, there's a couple of things that can be done in that. One is you can mitigate it. And the other thing is, is that you can have it removed if you have the engineering done and you raise the, the level of your, or the, uh, ground level of your homes to. Uh, avoid flooding, things like that. That ought to be, that probably ought to be part of what's brought before us too. Because if that area that is in, that is in the floodplain remains, it kinda shoots this whole thing down, down the tubes for you, not, you know what I mean?
And I just say, John, if that was the case, we never would have done Spanish Trails. That was in a hundred floodplain.
Yeah.
John?
It didn't get flooded either.
Anything to the west, I mean, we never did anything other than file documents. The Corps of Engineers came out of Colorado, actually brought the big wing out. And he didn't find any problem with our prop, with our property. He found a problem when we allowed the city to come in and do the sewer line and stuff like this that they had, they used major fill. Instead of putting the correct fill and stuff, which we corrected, we were glad to do it, you know, and stuff.
Just to make it clear that that's an issue that has to be addressed. Spanish Fork City spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. There'll be a staff condition. Building a levee to protect homes that were built on the west side of Spanish Fork when FEMA, FEMA, let's just say they updated their maps to get it right. So we will not, I think, be put in that position again and the floodplain will have to be addressed as part of a development approval.
For sure, that, yeah.
And so I think that's part of, of the process here.
Okay, oh, go ahead. Did you have more? Okay, so I have a few thoughts on this. I, I very much agree in many ways. I think that I, I actually agree with one of our, um, city council people that we, like, we really. It would really be good to have the general plan updated instead of just having spot zoning places. I, it just feels like a lot of one-offs and, and we may or may not be making the best choices, like who, I don't know. But listening to this makes sense to me. All of that makes sense, like this one wedgie seems like it fits. It doesn't fit the rest of the river bottoms vision because it's not, because of what John said. And so to me, it makes sense. I appreciate, I appreciate that you have these luxury home lots down on the southern end. But remember everyone that cur- currently to build a home in the river bottoms, it's one home per five acres. And so to fit to, I mean, it sounds to me like you're having like less than, less than a quarter acre lots. Where the home across this road is in, you're at least a half acre. So, so your home's at least a half acre. There's gonna be some proposed that are subdividing half acres, like. That seems like that would be the smallest if you're doing luxury home lots. Or, or if we're looking at estate density, which is our largest lots in the city, which is on prime land, really nice area. That's at least third acre lots. And so it seems like your luxury lots down on this end ought to, ought to at least nod on the low density, estate density. That's my opinion. And then, um, I, I really appreciate that you're wanting to put this product in like this. I, I really, really do. Um, and so, let's see. I am worried about river bottoms vision and people coming in and saying, well, you let people develop here, why not? And we do have a very good reason, I think, for not including this part in another part that we're looking at. I do.
Same thing on the north side of, of eleven hundred, eleven hundred west and only a block or two away, you've got high density and everything else. But right next to you, you don't have high density, but within a block or two, you have tremendous high density.
I understand what you're saying.
Same concept that you're telling me right now.
I understand what you're saying. Um, we, there is a chance to do something beautiful and I think, I, I think it needs a little more consideration. But I think it's going in the right direction. I think it is an opportunity to use this piece of land for something beautiful.
Any more discussion?
Do you wanna quantify the size of lot you're thinking of? When you said that, are you thinking at least twelve thousand square feet?
I think it needs to be at least fifteen thousand. That's the third acre, that's fifteen thousand, that's what, um, that's estate density, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
I will make one observation and that is, is that the lots that are going to be here, that are contemplated now are huge lots. But they're nearly undevelop, undevelopable unless you take out a whole bunch of that hill and, and then actually retain the rest. So it could be a huge lot, but you're not gonna be able to use very much of it, much like the lots that are just further south of there.
Still spaced, huh?
Space is space and you'll pay, you'll pay taxes on it, won't you?
But I also think that it's also flowing into a river bottom community where it's meant to be an agricultural rural kind of place.
For your feedback, I had the thought of around twelve thousand square feet, but even rough, just FYI.
Did it take a look at the, what, it's hard to even say what square footage should be and what width and length should be.
I understand what you're saying. I get what you're saying.
See the product, it's entirely, I have the smallest cabinet in Sundance, but people desire so much, they're willing to pay me three times. Because of just location where it is, but it's a long skinny lot right next to the resort.
Correct, but we have people moving out of Spanish Fork and going to other places because they can't get the size of lot they'd like. I've talked to many people that are like, Spanish Fork does not have big enough lots. I will pay the big bucks to buy a big one. So there is a population for sure. Anyway.
John?
There's not very many in Spanish Fork.
Are you okay with us asking the applicant what he prefer versus a continuation or denial?
I think that's, I think that that's perfectly okay, Vic. We do have, we, I, I think you can understand. Our, re, you know, w- we are sitting here wanting to do the best for everyone. And, uh, I understand the, uh, the lot sizes and stuff because that can be deceiving. Uh, and I think what Joseph was talking about prior was that as of we are, as we are right now, we don't have.
You play with that.
We don't have frontages and side views and, and rear views to make those kinds of decisions. And it would help if that were fleshed out. And of course, here you are and you don't, you know, I mean, I, I know what it costs to do that, yeah. Takes a lot of money just to do that, engineering work and that architectural work. And so that's why we wanted you to have every opportunity to talk about this and have the residents talk about it and as well as us understand it. We do have one more, we have one more, uh, uh, group that will be making the final decision and that's the city council. And so, uh, I, I'm a little bit hesitant to put something, uh, in that, uh, makes, makes the final decision for them. They should have the same opportunity to hear everything you've said. They have, they also deserve the opportunity, just like we've said. To see a little bit more fleshing out of how these are going to look and what they're going to look like. I think you can understand that.
We had given some of that to staff.
Yeah.
And with what we've done and developed, we have enough developments that I'm not worried about that and we will have site plans. We will have visual frontage, rear side yards and everything else for you. That's not an issue.
No.
He's, he's saying he wants us to continue or deny.
My, my, well, my point of it is, is that, uh, you can, you know, move it on to them to hear and without a decision that you were gonna come back or whatever, I don't know. But I certainly, after all this time, and these people don't understand all the negotiations that have gone on when this happened. And what we did, what we gave to the city and what the city gave to us. And, uh, I think that we deserve to be able to move forward on things, you know? We waited a long time. And you almost understand one thing. If you think that the bubble is, is blossoming, it's not. The bubble is bursting and so as a developer, a person who's put a tremendous amount of money and time in Spanish Fork City and what we've done has been good. So everybody can say whatever they want, but they can come and take a look at what we've done, okay? Thirty years ago. And so I'm just simply saying that we have a reputation of what we do in both counties, in Salt Lake and Utah County. In luxury, this is, this is going to be a luxury area. We're going to make everybody in that area's values go up. They may not be happy about it because they're gonna be paying more taxes. But they'll be, they'll be appreciative of it because they can get more money for their dollar, you know, and stuff. But we are.
Uh, we should, we're supposed to be having you. I mean, really, this is being recorded.
Well, we, I guess we can just make a motion.
And I, I think we need to go ahead.
So, so, I, I can't, I can't recommend approval based on that little coloring right there. So I, my recommendation would be denial. Uh, and then city council, I get, the applicant has every right to actually dial it in and present something else to city council, I guess. If that's what he wants to do.
Based on what you've said, I just have a couple of things I wanted to get out quickly.
Yeah, please.
I think, um, in the spirit of trying to just move the whole effort forward as quickly as possible. Which incidentally, the process of getting a preliminary plat prepared and reviewed by staff and things like that, doesn't happen fast. But getting to the point where the applicant has some direction that he can use in starting that work, I think the quickest path to that with some reliable direction. Does involve you making a recommendation tonight for the city council to consider. I don't know that they're gonna appreciate that, you know, kinda getting to make that decision at this point. Um, I think they will.
Too ambiguous.
But, um, I do think it would be appropriate for you to be as specific as you care to be. With either a recommendation to approve a particular zone or just to deny if there is a certain number of homes that you feel comfortable with, a certain, um, minimum lot size. Any of those types of things.
We don't even know if he's meeting city setbacks.
No, we don't.
I'm talking about in general. In general, that's, does that make sense, by the way? I mean, it.
I, I, well, I've already provided that feedback. It's.
Are you recommending that we deny or continue, which makes it move forward better? Yeah.
Continue does not move it forward.
It does not move it to.
Recommending to approve or deny would have it on the council's agenda in two weeks.
Having it on the, having it on the city, city council's agenda could be advantageous to you to get the final direction of which way to go. It gives you two weeks to, uh, to work with staff and city council members and to, uh. See which way that they envision this. Uh, we've heard from the residents, you've heard from us. And obviously we're just a little bit, I, I, i- i- if it wouldn't hold you up, I would, I would, uh. I would probably continue it, but that will definitely hold you up. But if we deny it.
But when is the next council meeting?
Two weeks from yesterday.
I know that. When is the one after that day? Do we know? Do you update?
One month or a month from yesterday.
Yeah, they meet the first.
First Wednesday, or first Tuesday is the first city council.
So they meet the first and third Tuesdays of each month.
So you could, you could, you could delay bringing it before the city council in two weeks and say, we wanna bring it to you in a month, right?
I guess the concern that I have with the applicant, putting a lot more effort into things at this point, is that, um, I, I really think that that might all be for naught.
Yeah, totally could be. That's the risk, yep. City council may completely disagree with us.
So I think, I think maybe the way for us to go is a denial, which still gives Vic the opportunity to take that to the city council. And you can take it at, you know, if, if two weeks is, is too much to ask.
Go ahead, Michelle.
That gives you some time.
Yeah, I have a question. If the city council also denies this request, because the request would be for an R three, zone change to R three.
That's all it is now.
And if the city can, council also denied that, Vic could come back with a different zone change proposal with a different plan. Based on the feedback that city council and planning commission gave.
We don't have anything that would prevent him from doing that the next day, yes.
In that regard, I entertain a motion.
I move the planning commission to recommend denial of D Land East Zone Change Approval Request to City Council. Uh, based upon a lack of information, but with the direction that if we had more information based on the second preliminary plat drawing. That we saw tonight, um, this body is more inclined to approve it with something generally consistent with what we're seeing. That meets city code, city setback zoning, the proposed zoning, elevations, floor plans, the details that we normally require seeing. For approval of a zone change and, and we'd like. And, and we'd like to see a preliminary plat with it. Uh, that's my motion.
I'd second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All, any opposed? Vic, I'm not sure that that's good, bad or indifferent, but it gives you some options and I think that you can tell that we are not slamming the door.
No, it moves us, it moves us more to hit to a meeting with everybody now.
Very good.
And then we can collectively make agreements and collectively take a, 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 a pathway. And I like Joseph's suggestion because, uh, people have a hard time, it's easy for people who have already their, and I know we're done, but people who have, already have houses, like where I live, you know, in Borm and Palisade, we already have houses and stuff and there's other places coming in. And I went against my neighbors because I said, why, why do, we have the right to give what we want and other people can't have a right to have a zone to do what they.
Right.
I think, I think these housing in a lot of places is great and I think this is one place it's luxury. We're not doing, we're not doing a two hundred thousand dollar townhome. I mean, it's going to be luxury, you'll see it and we'll send it to you.
Absolutely.
Well, at twenty eight hundred square feet to four thousand square feet, I want one.
Yeah, you'll see it.
Okay.
I do too.
Thanks Vic. Uh, with that, we're going to take a quick five minute break and we'll be right back to finish the meeting. Okay, uh, let's call the meeting back to order. We are going to change the agenda just a little bit to accommodate for the people that are here. We have several more things on the agenda, but we're going to skip to number eight, a concept review, uh, with Monty Bingham and we'll let Dave go ahead and start us on that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we met, um, with these folks last Wednesday, a week ago, to talk about this particular development proposal. Um, right now, this property is general plan, low density residential, it's zoned R one twelve. So to accommodate this proposal, a couple of different things would happen. This is distinct enough from the existing general plan that I think it would make sense, even if it's in concert, you know, running right with, um, a zone change, I think changing the general plan would be appropriate. And I'm sorry, maybe I need to orient people. This is four hundred north here, this is Spanish Fork Parkway. Uh, these are the legacy farms, townhomes over here, Maple Mountain High School, I think is a quarter of a mile to the south of this. Does that help, does everybody know what we're talking about?
Just south of the edge, John. Really?
Is it edge?
Yeah, true story.
I was thinking they were all Salisbury or Fieldstone.
These guys? These guys?
I'll certainly take the commissioner's word for it. Oh, edge is too, so this is just north, that's right, that is edge.
Yep.
Um, large power line here, um, and to just get to the nuts and bolts of it, this particular proposal, um, is something that we haven't seen before. Um, I don't believe anybody's, um, constructed a community like this yet in Utah County. We talked with the applicant about that a little bit last week, um, and maybe I'll touch on a couple of things relative to that.
Do you know what zone that would have to be to accommodate that?
Right now it would, from a density perspective, it would be R three and.
Does it otherwise meet the R three zoning standards?
There are probably some things that we would have to change either in our construction standards or zoning standards to accommodate the proposal as well.
Does R three require frontage on public streets? It doesn't, does it?
No, it doesn't. Um, but, uh, for example, typically we require developments like this to have public streets. So, um, as designed, uh, that would be one thing that would have to be reviewed, um, and maybe without going any further into any details, um, do you want to kind of take over?
Sure.
These folks do have a, what I would say is a very.
Except for any question, what's the general plan for this?
Low density residential.
I printed it off, John. Here, take a shot. Low density. I think we have the images that are the highest density zoning.
Well, thanks for letting us jump ahead on the agenda and appreciate your time tonight. So really, and this is, this is conceptual, um, and we did get a, a list of feedback from the DRC the other day, um, that's been helpful. Um, and a, a number of those items will affect density, um, and we do recognize and respect the fact that this is differing from the general plan. Um, I, I think the reason we feel at least confident enough to bring it up is due to the fact that it is on a busy street and it has the power lines through it. Looking at it from a developer point of view, I don't think I would have much interest in it as a low density project. Um, I don't know what, what goes into you creating your general plan, but.
A lot.
And, and so I'm trying to respect that, so I don't want to say that.
You're just mildly respecting it though, you're kind of like, you were kind of like throwing a bus at it?
Yeah.
Just keep telling us.
Anyway, I didn't mean that. So that's, we're just looking at, at, at putting this in here. Um, I don't think Dave quite got to the point where, um, this might be kind of the, the, the second shoe that drops, but this, we are looking at as, as lease product. Um, this would be a for lease community, um, one single owner that would own and operate and maintain the, the, the project, but it will not be owner occupied. Um, that's the idea.
Are we allowed to ask questions as you go or do you want to wait, us to wait till the end?
Of course.
Uh, do you have other projects like this where you're a property manager?
So this, we're, we, this will be our first.
Okay.
Yep. So it's, it's new in Utah, the Church of Jesus Christ Water Saints is doing a number of them, but, um.
There's actually one just northeast.
So there.
American Home Center.
Yes, it's a little different though in what they've done because it's kind of, they've taken a, a, my understanding anyways is part of a, a community that they, they took a street or so.
Existing private subdivision.
Yeah.
You're right, that's what that is.
So.
That's a good difference, that is different, alright.
So it's, it's multiple homes and I think they're still individually platted, they could be sold to anybody where this will, the plan is that it's the one single plat, one owner.
You could sell them later if you condominiumize the plat, sell them off later.
We could and I'd be interested to hear your opinion on what would be best.
What's the product?
It's single family, um, we do have some renderings of that. Uh, they're, they're detached, they are close, uh, they're small setbacks, um, but it is detached, single family.
For square footage of the home and the lots.
So the homes are going to be anywhere between fourteen and eighteen hundred square feet. There, there are no basements, um, and this is a rendering of the actual product we planned to build. It was pointed out to DRC that the setback isn't quite enough to have that car fit, so that's a, a mistake on our part. The intention is that we will have the, the full twenty five feet, um, to get a car and have the parking in there. But as far as the, uh, it was brought up about selling them off later on and if we platted it individually, we could do so, um, there is quite a bit of concern and we share it, that, that the community stays maintained. And if, and, and most of the opposition we hear about rentals is that they're in disrepair. Generally, we see that when you have a poor landlord who doesn't take care of the property, where this would be an institutional owner, um, with a, with a professional property management company, we feel, and, and we don't have much in Utah, but in Arizona, it's, it's quite big, um, Texas, and there's some in, um.
Is the idea that they would take care of all of the common area, including driveway, snow and?
Hundred percent, everything.
Even the landscaping?
Yep, the landscaping, the homes themselves, everything is taken care of by the property management who is employed by the owner. So.
Backyards as well?
The backyards, everything is, so if, these probably will have fences, uh, individual, individual backyards and the, the way that they do that is we have a gate from backyard to backyard so they can go through and mow. So we see that as a benefit, it's a fail safe to, to kind of keep an eye on and keep it, the property maintained and to keep it from falling into disrepair. Um, so that's kind of why we, we lean that direction. But there, there aren't any of these currently in Utah, there is one again that the church is building in Riverton, it is under construction, there are about four hundred homes, I think just shy of four hundred homes in there. Um, and, uh, so we will see it soon, but, uh, but it is new, we're a little bit, uh, later to the party in Utah than some other states.
We actually had somebody come and present something.
Same thing.
Same thing here in Spanish Fork.
I, I heard that that's.
Yeah, you're the twelve, thirteenth person to.
Great.
Just kidding, it's the seventh.
Well, I'm glad I'm not the first first, so. Um, so we do have, and, and it was mentioned by someone in the DRC that we may have a snowball's chance. If that's the case, then that's the case. We just would like to bring it up, have the discussion, um, and see, see what's thought.
There, I'll make, I'll make two comments. One is, is that if you go back to the map, uh, the property just east of you is commercial, uh, zoned commercial at this time and it will probably develop as such. I know the owner and they're kind of holding out for something that is going to be viable, uh, commercially there. Uh, the surrounding ground around what you have, uh, are single family homes on larger lots. Uh, the, uh, the townhomes that are there in the orange are under construct, uh, they're not built out yet, are they? They're still building on there. Uh, and so it's somewhat consistent with that and one of the things that, uh, I have seen with Spanish Fork's zoning is, is that where there's commercial property, sometimes we fan out and allow higher density next to the commercial property. But this isn't the size of a property that is going to have a big box store or something like that there, you know, or most it might be a neighborhood type market or some other commercial property there. And so I'm, I'm a little concerned that this whole area that's to the west of you, uh, you know, that's referred to as legacy farms all the way and there are no, well, other than, let's see, Joseph, isn't there some other, uh, townhomes to the west?
Not to the west, well, unless you go really far, no, those are apartments actually.
No, they're not, are they?
You're talking, uh, so there's apartments right down here.
Yeah, but, but that's, but that's not really what.
So there's townhomes right here at Salisbury?
And that's it.
Yeah, that's it.
And so I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit concerned and, and when they say a snowball's chance, that would be the reason that they may say that is, is that, uh, Mr. Warnock all the time is talking about how we need to preserve the space that we have for the larger lots because we don't have a lot of larger lots left in Spanish Fork City. And I know that for a fact because I have a son who is building elsewhere because there is not a lot that would accommodate his home in Spanish Fork for sale right now, there isn't one. And so, you know, we, we see the higher density going in everywhere and, uh, and it's understandable that, uh, the cost of housing has necessitated having smaller units at a, at a, at a lower cost because it's all that they can afford when they're starting out and stuff like that. It's another reason that maybe it's a good idea to have these as rentals because people will live there for a while and then hopefully they'll move up as their income allows it. And if they are leased homes, then maybe that's the stepping stone that they need. So I'm not saying that it's, uh, that I'm for or against it, I'm just telling you that from my view, you have one thing going for you with the, with the, or with the commercial and the higher density just north of that, you know, that could, that could be a factor because you have two kind of collector roads with silent road and the Parkway. Uh, the, uh, but the power line going through for me is a, is a non-starter at all because everyone on that corridor has the same thing.
Sure.
You know, that's, that's not the city's responsibility to make your project profitable. If you want to develop that property, you know what's there and you know you have to do something about it.
Of course.
So you're coming and asking us and I appreciate that you come and ask us before you get too far down the road. But, uh, so that's my comments and I'd like to hear the other commissioners' comments.
You looked at me to, I, I can't speak, Michelle, Sean?
Sure.
Did you finish your presentation because I didn't want to cut you off with my questions?
Oh, sorry about that.
I, I, I like information, so if you got more, I'll, let us.
I, I, I don't know that there's a whole lot more to add other than that we do recognize this is going to be changed, so, and I'd like your opinion, our, our hope, our plan now is to get any feedback from you guys, take the feedback we got from the DRC, do a redesign and then present it as a, as a plan amendment to the city council to just see where it goes. So that is our plan.
But this hasn't been, hasn't been submitted? It would have had to been for DRC Congress.
It's a concept. It's a concept.
So that's where we're going, that's.
Another, another caution I'll, I'll give you right now is, is that, uh, a year and a half ago or so, the property just.
Kitty corner.
Yeah, kitty corner from this, uh, had a similar proposal.
Yeah, we heard about it.
Because of the.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah. Because of the power line and stuff and, uh, and, and that's it, it's a small property there.
Right there.
And that was denied. Uh, they proposed to have a little piece of that be, uh, be commercial to match that across the street that would have been outside of the right of way of the, uh, of the power line. But to make up for that, they, they suggested some high density, I won't say high density, some townhomes in there and it was denied because it didn't fit the rest of the community. And at that time, a lot of these homes were not built yet. These have come in just in the last two years. So this was kind of open property right over the, over to the, uh, railroad tracks and that didn't go very well. And so, you know, you've got a similar concept here and I don't know what this is going to bring, I know these guys.
Top golf, John, it's top golf.
I like your idea.
Thank you.
Uh, so, anyway, uh, so this may be an uphill climb.
So we did hear, we did hear about this situation, um, city staff's been very informative and, and helpful in coaching us along and, and have given us no false hopes, um, but we did originally design this with townhomes and they said, hey, look, it's going to be a really tough sell. So we, we reversed that and we've gone to these detached, single family, so.
So the zoning would have to change to what here, Dave? In order to R three, right?
Uh, so I missed your name in the beginning.
Simon Kirschman.
Hi, Simon.
I probably didn't even say it.
Thanks for coming. Are you the property owner?
I'm not.
Hello, welcome. First, I'm excited that it's going to be developed, I hope it gets developed, um, and it's something that fits the area. Eventually, I understand this is the beginning of the process, so this is actually pretty cool, I'm excited that it eventually will get developed. So my thoughts are, so C two, we got R three, um, the zoning around you as far as the residences and even to the west, that field in the west is R one twelve and the general plan calls for low density. The thing about that R one twelve though, and where I'm a little bit, uh, I, I might be willing to have a smaller residential lot, is that those, those lot sizes are actually six to eighty five hundred square feet, six thousand to eighty five hundred square feet are the actual lot sizes. So that was approved as a big master plan development and that's, I think, how it was zoned R one twelve, but, um, the lot sizes of each home is significantly smaller. So true to form, I, I like the idea of matching, uh, to a certain extent, matching what's surrounding it, which is also why I, one thought I have is, you know, it, it may not gain traction, and I, I kind of have mixed feelings about it, but I'm, you're here for feedback, so I'm speaking out loud, right?
Sure, yep.
One thought I'm having is four hundred north, it, it's busy and I think it's going to have to get widened, um, in the near term or at least in the medium term and it's going to keep getting busier. Uh, Spanish Fork Parkway is about to connect, I hope.
We hope.
I, I want, you know, we want it to connect and, and, and that's going to be a, a more, um, it's going to be a better corridor and it's a wide road, actually, it's, it's built for a lot of traffic, Spanish Fork Parkway. Um, and you have, you have those townhomes there to the east. I'm a little bit, I, I, I'm a little bit sympathetic to some sort of higher density along, along four hundred north and, and along Spanish Fork Parkway to, to a certain extent, maybe even, let me use my pointer, so some sort of higher density along four hundred north and then something that goes along Spanish Fork Parkway, because again, this is C two and this is R three, but I would have to, I would think you'd have to, I, you'd have to stop at either, potentially. But I would have to, I would think you'd have to, I, you'd have to stop at either, potentially up here, but potentially even down here. And then you have to, and then I would recommend backfilling in with like an R one eight or an R one nine would be probably the highest residential density I, I would potentially be open to. The reason that I say that is because I think the property's big enough to support what I call built-in property notice, where anyone who moves in is aware of what's going on, and they know what they're buying into. So they would know that along, along that outer corridor, you have high, you have, you have a higher density, but still a single-family home, it's a nice product like you're. I've seen the elevations, they look good, so they look good. But then coming back, I would backfill it in with residences, bigger. Eight thousand, maybe nine thousand square foot lots, potentially with an MPD as low as seventy-five hundred. You can put a really nice house nowadays on six thousand, seventy-five hundred. Vic was right. You, you could put a really, you can fit a lot of house on that.
That's true.
Those are my thoughts.
Would you think there'd be any way to entertain closer to a six thousand on that?
The question, my question for you, Joseph, is are, are you talking about me approving a lease area? Or say just sell the.
I tend to not discriminate on that.
Sell the, so still have that kind of density that you're describing, whether it's a.
Which is just right here.
Whether it's a rental or a.
I bet they'd end up selling them, the single-family homes.
Which, um, not my place, but what Joseph's describing from a density perspective is the project next to Somerset Villas. That's probably at about five or six minutes to the acre there. Um, so it's at the west of Somerset Villas Salisbury Homes Build. Those homes, um.
Where?
To the east.
Oh.
West, to the west, I'm sorry, to the east.
And then since, and since, while you're showing that, since I'm talking out loud and you're getting, I mean, you're going to get both sides of this thing. And then part of me is totally could see it being all, all R one twelve, like we always thought it would be, and that's great. And that's what I thought it would be, and I'd be really happy about that, too.
You cover every base.
I, I, it's the truth. I could see, I, I mean, I get that it's C two. I, I don't know. I think it's ten to fifteen years early on getting an actual viable commercial retail corner right there. I mean, I don't know what's going to go there. It's not, it's going to have to be something, some boutique place that doesn't need a lot of customers, which I don't know if those exist.
Really?
High schoolers.
My name's Monty Bingham. I've owned this property for twenty years. I'm a general contractor. My whole idea was when I first bought the property is to, to build a few homes in there and just leap from one home to the next. But as things change, I realize that that wasn't going to happen. But, I mean, with, with the power line there and with Fourth North and Parkway there, having those collector roads there, they're busy. And probably one of the biggest drawbacks from the community is people are frustrated with traffic. As soon as Parkway opens up, if we ever get over the tracks there, that'll open it up to the downtown area and make it nicer. But one, one thing that we've noticed in the last five years or so is kids have changed their view of ownership of a home. Instead of having a home that's where they can mow the grass and put an RV next door, they no longer have that vision. They want to rent somewhere. All they want to do is be able to entertain people in a barbecue grill or a TV, and they don't own a lawnmower, they don't want to push the lawnmower, their parents have had to mow in the grass for a long time. And that's a, that's a, a big thing nowadays. And I see it in my grandkids and my kids, and their desire is to, is to own, own a place. And I feel that a lot of people in Spanish Fork, as their kids are getting older, they're getting married, and they're moving out of Spanish Fork because they can't find a place to rent, they can't find a place to move in right after they're married. They know they have to rent, so they end up in Springville, which is, which has a lot of rental places down there. And they go to Santa Quinn or somewhere else. So as I see it, Spanish Fork is losing some of those, that youth that are getting married. As I spoke with Simon and they proposed this plan, I think it's something that Spanish Fork could use. It would bring a lot of income to the city. Yes, it is higher density, but kids nowadays, they don't go out and throw frisbee like they used to. When they annexed us in, at that time, the city council wanted to do commercial all along Fourth North. Councilman Davis says, we'd like to see the whole thing commercial. And I don't really want to see that commercial. I don't want to see high lights, high lights in my backyard. I don't want to see pavement and that type of things. I've really enjoyed having my horses back there. It's worked out really well, but we've kind of got to the point in our life that it's past that. The other day, my horse was out on the middle of Fourth North and backing up traffic all the way down. I mean, I just can't have that happen. When I irrigate, I get more soccer balls and styrofoam cups than I ever want in the ditch because I'm the last person on the ditch. So it's, it's, I'm to that point in my life, I need to do something. But I also know from being the, from the contractor's point of view that our younger generation don't want a half acre lot or a third acre lot to mow any longer. It's just not in their deck of cards. They don't have that vision like we had when we were that age. And so, so I think with that proposal, it's probably a little higher density than I'd like, but I think there's a need for that in Spanish Fork.
Thank you.
Well, I think that's about all we've got to offer, and any other feedback or suggestions you may have, we'd love to hear.
I'll make one comment. Monty, I, I understand what you're saying about, about what the younger generation is looking at, and I agree with you. There's a lot of that, but I also think that there are places that we already have the higher density right across the street there as part of it. Spanish Fork, I don't remember the exact number of the units that were built in Spanish, or that were permitted.
Eighteen, eighteen hundred sixty-seven.
Eighteen hundred sixty-seven.
Eight hundred sixty-seven.
And how many, and how many were sing, single-family, and how many were?
No, one thousand eight hundred sixty-seven, high-density.
High-density. And there are proposals.
Am I right? Don't, don't look it up. I'm right. Don't look it up. Don't check.
It's a lot.
But regardless of what it is, we, we are, we are trying to meet that need as well in places where it's zoned for that. And I'm sure, Monty, that you've known ever since the Legacy Farms started what, what that was going to be and what it's become, you know, that they've tried to keep those as larger lots. And, and it's hard for me to just say, well, because it's needed in the entire town, that this is the place for it. One of the, one of the big issues, I live in a place where I can look over the valley, and it breaks my heart sometimes to see all of that nice farm ground being paved over and houses on it. But I've got four kids and three of them are in that paved area. And so I'm just as much to blame for all of this as anybody. And I hate to, I hate to criticize any kind of development, but I, I am a pretty firm believer in, once something is zoned, there has to be a real compelling reason to, to change that zone and to change that. One of the first things that happened to me when I got on this commission was allowing these townhomes over here. There was, there was, and I don't remember the exact circumstances, but because they lost some of the lots on the west side of that, of, of Legacy Farms, the higher density was left here, and they allowed more high-density on that side where those are. And, and we've had other proposals besides the one that's just kitty corner from you, right there, that are further south on twenty-five fifty, or whatever that is, Spanish Fork Parkway, it was in front of the high school. Further south of the high school, there was a, a proposal just a couple of years ago for a, a senior, a fifty-five and older development. They were going to have mostly duplexes and some fourplexes. And there's quite a lot of complaint about that, that the homes that were west of there, you know, were building in a place where they thought that they would be in that type of a, in that type of a setting. With single-family homes with larger lots and larger yards. And, you know, that's what we've got right here, right against you, and even if we were to approve that, I would imagine that that's on the other side of Slant Road is still going to be single-family homes and in the larger, you know, low-density. So we're kind of creating an island, not kind of, we are creating an island, if we were to go to this kind of a concept. So I, you know, I, I can see us pushing the ball uphill a bit if we're going to go forward with this kind of a proposal. And I understand that there's the need, and I understand that there, but, but there's quite a few examples of some higher density right now that's going on in Spanish Fork and others that are in the pipeline as we speak. There's, there's some a lot higher density than what you're asking for. That's all I have.
Do you want to speak to us?
Sure.
Sure, come on up.
So, my name's Jeff Richardson. I'm a neighbor. I live just right there across the street.
How did you find out about this?
My wife found out, I think, on social media and saw this.
That's.
Because I think she just jumped on like last.
Because this wasn't noticed, right?
It's not on the agenda.
Okay.
It's on the agenda.
It got added.
Yeah, it was on the agenda.
It got added last.
It was on the agenda, yeah. I put it on, I sent it out to Friday.
Yeah, I'm impressed. Good job.
Well, that's my wife.
It could be because I, I got an email from John Simison, and he asked what's going on, and I told him this was happening.
Good.
Well, I think this is a great forum because I, I'm not outright opposed. I think some of the ideas they have look nice. And, you know, I have just a ton of respect for Monty, and I really hope he and they get to sell their land and, you know, just they're, they're wonderful people, wonderful neighbors. But there's concerns that they, they presented this plan and invited some of the neighborhood to come, and there was a lot of concern about the density. I think that's just been a theme through tonight, right? Everybody wants high density. It's a housing bubble, packed with many units, and so I, I get that. My father was a developer for, forever. They're proposing a hundred and seventy-eight units, which is a lot of units right there. I appreciate all the things you guys have said. A couple of the thoughts, just to add on to this that maybe haven't been said. Spanish Fork Parkway, one day will punch through. You know, against hope, we believe in hope, and we're hoping that that happens soon, right? But until that happens, there's a lot of congestion that happens on Fourth, uh, Four Hundred that doesn't get alleviated and gets exacerbated by the school. You have Reese Elementary down the road, and there's only one way in to Reese. And so when school hits, it backs up all of Four Hundred.
So bad.
It's so bad. And I, I don't know if in the general plan, but if there's a way to connect Legacy Farms on the back way, like that whole neighborhood could come from the north would be amazing, just as a thought. You guys are nodding, so you guys are on it. That's great. But there's, that, that's a problem. And this land right here, my understanding is owned by the school district.
Yeah.
So we could have another school right here, and we've got, quarter mile to the south, we've got the high school. So there's a lot of schools, a lot of congestion, and putting in a hundred and seventy-eight units just seems like it's a bit much. And there's already concerns that we've already allowed, you know, the, the townhomes, and then adding more high-density housing. Just, at least from the neighbors, sounded like that was assault on, on wounds that are already opened. So that was, I think, probably the largest concern was traffic, which I know we talked about it gets worse before it gets better. When I was little, we moved to, my dad was a developer, moved to Henderson, Nevada, which at the time was the fastest-growing city in the country. So I get those growing pains. I know how that works. And it does get better, but there's just a few things that are really stacked, I think, in a difficult way right now in terms of the density. You know, obviously with rentals, you know, I've lived in California for a long time, there's a lot of rentals there. It does equal transancy, which creates its own challenges. You know, you get a lot of students, but they'll pack in four or five people in there, and you have four or five cars, and so parking becomes an issue, right? Because they're kind of sub, they're splitting it up, you all get a room, and it just means more cars. And people talk about changing the habits. We don't just store cars in garages anymore. In fact, a lot of people use it for living spaces, they use it for toys, as you mentioned earlier. And so, you know, want to make sure that this plan has enough parking for visitors and friends and for spillover because spillover likely would mean parking on Spanish Fork Parkway or maybe even on Slant, heaven forbid, which again, creates more challenges. So just some, I think, thoughts that the community had and I had personally. Not outright opposing, but just some concerns about the density, so thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, you are chomping at the bit.
I am. And it's late, so I'm going to try to be quick.
Wait, Shauna hasn't told us what she wants to do with that land.
It's late-ish. I'm sorry. Am I getting ahead of you?
I don't want to.
I want to know what Shauna wants to do.
Honestly, I, I can see a whole lot of sides of the issue, and I'm sympathetic to a lot of sides of the issue, but when I'm feeling that way, then I generally say it'd be better to just go with the general plan in that area. That's all.
I like that. Michelle?
She said no comment.
Oh, she didn't.
Yeah.
I really appreciate Simon taking the time to put this together, to come tonight. We have not encouraged him to suggest higher density here, just to be clear. We did recommend that the zoning be changed. I think it was actually a general plan amendment to accommodate the townhomes on the other side, which really went up in flames, that idea, there diagonally on the other side of the intersection. With staff that we do learn. It wasn't long ago. That's informative.
It was a year, so months ago?
Yeah, that's pretty informative.
Couple of years ago.
Because those same people would show up.
That was a heated meeting.
That being said, I do think that intersections like this are very appropriate places for higher density than what you might see. Kind of flanking that. Great places as well for non-residential uses typically. So just like we felt on the other side here, I think from a land use perspective, again, just generally talking about a more intense land use, like higher-density residential development makes sense. But the general plan is what it is, the zoning is what it is. We heard that, and we're not encouraging people necessarily to try to change that. But I think there's merit to the concept.
I'm not unsympathetic to having the edges along the roads be higher density. But especially when there's townhomes on one side and commercial on, on one side in a busy street. But, yeah.
But even then, I feel like I'm talking myself out of that because then it feels like we're spot zoning.
Right.
Because I'm much like, why do it if it's just going to be one row?
And it's meant to flow into these neighbors here and this, and this zoning that way.
There are lots of ways we could achieve that pattern to where it would.
It wasn't clunky.
Not be spot zoning, to where it could be one neighborhood that wouldn't have really visible seams and things like that.
And I'm not against this kind of development. I'm actually quite intrigued by it and the, the, the pictures you showed of it. I'm like, oh, that looks so great. And it, but the other place that it was proposed in the community is right, right next to the freeway. Like it's a, it's kind of.
The pallet site?
Yeah, it's a, it seems like an area that makes more sense to have a, have a rental community, lease community.
The concept that we're looking at here is what I wanted to take a few minutes to talk about. Pallet factory site, this one, there's another property in town that we've been approached about with this particular, I would say, like, development model. I think you're probably going to get more proposals for this. I'm Larry. I'm sometimes pretty risk adverse, and I do not necessarily like the idea of being potentially the first community in Utah County to go through an approval process and just to kind of see how this works. This has been very, very successful as a, as a model of having a single-family detached rental product, just as was described by Simon. One owner typically they do become, owned by institutions. And the things that I wanted to take a minute to talk about, in fact, are some of the details that Simon's put into this particular design that are somewhat uncommon for this type of product. For example, single-family detached homes where they each have two-car garages. Most of the products that I've seen, I say products, it's like neighborhoods, developments, things like that. In the Phoenix metro area, a lot of times the homes don't have attached garages. Sometimes they have detached garages. A lot of times it's carports and different things like that. Some of the other folks that we've talked.
That's Arizona.
It's Arizona, but yet some of the other folks, these that we've talked about, that's the model that they want to replicate to a T here. So I don't know if this is the time to start to think about if somebody were to get a project like this approved in Spanish Fork. Would you want to give more thought to what some of the designing criteria should be for that and those types of things? Or do we want to? Or do we want to maybe just cut our teeth, which occasionally is the case when somebody brings along an idea like this? You have the idea, you decide what you do and don't like about it and we make changes to zoning laws and design standards, construction standards, whatever it might be, to make it fit as we go along.
I, I have a couple of comments about that and in this particular case, you look at both sides of that issue with it, you know, this might be the pro, the po, a, a great project
In the wrong spot.
in the, in the community that can be utilized, but we have the master plan, we have the zoning in place, we have a road that will at some point in time be put in, but it ain't there yet. And knowing the railroad, I don't think anybody wants to put very much money on when that's gonna get done. You know, uh, I don't know, those guys are nuts. So, you know, I, I would say that right now, this time, I'd go with location, location, location. I don't think this is a location.
I agree with Shawna.
I think that if it were closer to the freeway, down where we're talking about other higher density, great concept, you know, go for it. As a transition from high density to lower density, this, this makes a lot of sense. We're plopping this down in the middle of low density. With the exception of the one place that we really kinda had to have our arms twisted to get it there anyway. I don't think that anybody was all that happy with, with what we've got there anyway. At the time that it was done, it's good, it's a good product, I've driven through it, it looks okay. But I just, this is a part of that legacy farms, in my opinion. I think Legacy actually kinda stopped at, uh, Slant Road. I don't know that you guys were really a part of that at all. But yet it's, it's right there after, I mean, there it is. And so, to make that kind of a change, I just, I'm not prepared. I, a- at this time, I don't think I would be.
You're talking about a general plan amendment and zoning map amendment for the site.
Yeah, because if you widen this out, there's four or five more places along Fourth North that aren't, that aren't, uh, finished yet.
And I'm, honestly, I'm not surprised to hear that.
So, that's just my opinion and uh, I, I could change that opinion because I like Simon's, I like the wha- what's on the paper and I like that, I just don't know that it's right for this property.
I would. I'm not trying to persuade anybody. I, I wouldn't want Simon and Monty to spend the time and the money to go through that effort at this location, cause I, I would feel bad. I, I wouldn't want them to invest time and money in figuring that out for this prop, for this property.
Okay.
So, I wouldn't wanna mislead them. I think those are the very questions that we brought tonight for you guys, for the benefit of Simon, um, and the property owner. And at the same time, I guess maybe I'm trying to take advantage of the effort that they've put into the concept with the question, so maybe the other question, which is, uh, how do you feel about this someplace else? Of course, you've seen some information relative to that, obviously, the, the concept that was presented then was awfully fuzzy. Um, do you want to maybe work to put some standards in place before somebody makes a formal application for something like this someplace else? Do you hate the idea so much that you wouldn't consider it anywhere? Um, or do you just wanna deal with it as it comes up and be passive about it?
I think it's a good idea to look to see s- standards. But I don't know. What's your hesitancy?
All I, 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 I feel like I know the crux of the issue and I, I may be wrong. It's gonna be, the community is gonna be as good as the property management company is, period. And potentially if they're bad, that community will be just as good as the city's ability to spend time and money enforcing upkeep if the property manager's bad. So,
That ain't gonna happen.
As city. I disagree. Okay. I think the management and the maintenance, that's a given. But the kind of investment that somebody would make in a project like this, I think, over time, it's, that's the easy part. I think it's all about design on the front end. Oh, I have faith in you. I, I, I know that'll be good. I'll tell you, right now, in terms of tools, Is it too much faith? We're all over the place in terms of what, what could be allowed and what could happen. Now, if you're saying, I get to pick and choose, you're comfortable with that, then I have full faith as well. I'm pretty confident that, yeah, we can make this, we could make this particular type of model probably be an asset for a neighborhood and it would be based on some of the things that Simon's presented here. I mean it, I, they're getting bad news, but I am very complimentary of some of the things that they've designed. Still understanding that if this were to move forward, there would be some changes probably that we would talk about. Um, but, uh, this is, this is an upgraded version of the developments that I've seen in other states, certainly. So, that would be a place where I would at least maybe wanna start as we talk about somebody doing this kind of development here.
I, I like the concept and I think it gives options for housing. Um, renters don't always wanna live in a condominium apartment complex, a townhouse. They might want a yard, but they don't wanna take care of the yard. I really like the concept, but in the right location.
I also agree that parking could be a problem in somewhere like this. Because one of the things that we've talked about with parking is with the townhomes recently is if they've had a basement, y- you know, having it part of their HOA that you have to park your car in your garage and I guess that's part of the part of a management company kind of thing too.
And part of the original design?
Yeah.
Right?
Right, yeah.
I would even feel a little differently if this property were swapped with the commercial property and so it would, it abutted the railroad tracks.
I would too.
Yeah.
You know, that, that was on the peripheral edge of the east bench.
Adjacent to townhomes?
Yes, because that land, part of the reason that the commercial kinda goes there is because it is next to the tracks. You know, because that piece of ground maybe isn't quite as desirable as the ones that are further, that are further west. But again, this, now, the, that being said, it's right next to that commercial property. And so, when you look at that along with the high density that's right there, that's what kinda has me a little bit shaky on the whole thing. But at the same time, where, so now are we gonna say, well, Spanish Fork Parkway is a busy street and we got Slant Road, so let's put it there. Well, who's gonna say, well, why did we stop at Slant Road? You know, let's, let's go to the next spot, let's go to the next spot. And we've got property on the north and the, and the south side of Fourth South that still doesn't have homes. Most of it is owned by the large developers. And so, it will be developed in large slots and, 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 unless they come, unless they see this kind of a development that is maybe a little more profitable to some developers, that they might want to do the same thing. I just don't know that, again, I, the concept's great, I just can't buy it right there, right now. No offense.
Um, heard that loud and clear.
Okay.
So, absolutely.
Cause you spoke loud. Um, just kidding, Shawna.
And, uh,
We also have two other commissioners that haven't weighed in on any of this.
And, and, and not candor.
And they tend to disagree with us all the time.
Um,
We're good.
Anything else? I, my questions really have more to do with the development type than this location, which doesn't do too much good.
Well, unless you find a site. I mean, there's, I, I, we're looking at it, but, so, I'm interested in taking that route too, but, um, generally speaking, I mean, parking's come up, we will make sure there's parking, um, and, uh, I think really my biggest question at this point is, and Dave's right, they haven't encouraged us, they've been very, very straightforward, they said, hey, we have pitchforks and torches the last time, so, hundred percent, but, you know, we don't, I guess, I don't wanna give up, you know, until we really have been shut down. I mean, is there any harm in us taking it to the next step? Are we gonna, you know, I don't wanna burn the city out on, on us knocking on the door constantly, but I, I do want to say, you know, I'd love to take all the feedback we've gotten, get a really solid redesign and, and bring it back. Um, and that's not to, to fly in the face of everything that's been said, I recognize we are looking at a rezone, we are looking at a plan amendment and, and we wanna respect that. But at the same time, being a bit tenacious, we wanna continue and, and, and and hope that there's a chance, you know, it, it.
So, you're saying there's a chance?
One in a million.
One in a million, there's a chance. I would never say that there's not a chance, but I.
I just, I don't want. That's very encouraging language, just.
I would never say that there's not.
I, I know sometimes that gets interpreted.
Well, I'm just thinking to my, I, when you were saying that, I was thinking, well, if you actually, if you listen to everything, I don't know what that's gonna look like. You said you're gonna incorporate everything you heard, I'm like, well, you're gonna show us an R one twelve flat then?
We gotta go back and do a lot of work, so I don't know what it's gonna look like either. Um, and then we've gotta try and pencil it out, see if it actually makes financial sense, but, um, but I, I wanna take the long view, we wanna take the long view with the city, we hope that this is not the only and anywhere near the last project that we'll be presenting. So, so I don't wanna burn the relationship out you know, by, by pushing something that's just not gonna happen, you know, but we would like to, if there is even one in a million, we would like to, to see if that's possible.
Well, I think if I were voting, I would say it, you, you, it would probably be good to look at R one twelve zoning development there, but I want the best for, for Bingham's, honestly. This is your land and it'd be so good. We need to be consistent with what, I don't know, I think it's good to be consistent with the general plan.
Yeah.
It's, it's R one fifteen on the north side of that, so, uh, if R one twelve is already a, a higher density than current zone.
Yeah.
Oh, right.
Yeah, the, the northern half of it is R one fifteen.
I am.
Yeah, right there. So, uh, you know, with, with some modifications and, and looking at higher density along the main corridors and then going to lower density or something like that, but you know, you, you, you've got the neighbors now who are against you and if you go across the street where we denied the other one, you know, there's the pitchforks and the, and the torches that'll come out there as well.
Well, we're, we're trying to work with everybody and, and Jeff came to our meeting a few weeks ago at the school, we just invited the neighbors within five hundred feet of the property and, and they had lots of legitimate concerns and, and honestly some good suggestions, um, but we don't, we don't want pitchforks anywhere, um, you know, the Bingham's aren't moved, they, they don't wanna, you know, they, they want friends, so, um, anyway. We're, we're hoping that we're taking at least the right approach, you know, it, it may not work out, but we, you know, I don't, I don't wanna give up yet, if that's okay, I guess.
Okay.
Does, does that seem fair?
I think, I think you've heard, taking the temperature of this body, how's that?
It's free, it's free country.
One, one thing to consider, I mean,
Still.
people who move into the townhomes aren't gonna be newlyweds. They can't afford it.
I agree that.
You're not gonna get them.
I, I.
You're gonna be rentals, these are big people that get married. These'll be people who come in, they don't wanna buy a home yet, but they got a high-quality job and they wanna get into a school and be able to rent for a year or so.
What do you anticipate rents to be on a fourteen-hundred to eighteen-hundred square foot, two-car garage, single-family home?
It's gonna be around two thousand bucks.
Those may not be newlyweds either, Monty.
That's true. But at least they can qualify for rent. I mean, they don't have to have a twenty percent down or whatever.
That's true.
What they're finding with a lot of these people is they, they are the part of the demographic who, who's not interested in owning a home or whatever.
Right.
And, but they're to the point where the apartment's not cutting it, condo's not cutting it, they need to put the kayak somewhere. They want a, a little bit of a yard for the dog to go out. And, and that niche
I like the product.
Isn't, you know.
I don't think that's the question.
So, it's.
It's where.
It's really, it's more attainable, I mean, for some people it's a matter of portability, but it's, it's availability.
Yeah.
My, my, my bigger concern is just location and spot zoning and.
That's right.
Yeah.
So, I think we pretty well beat that horse to death and we will move on.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and I hope that, uh, you know, all the best.
We're gonna leave you guys here, unfortunately.
Stick around, it gets more exciting.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, we'll move back.
I have a lot of red lines for the Title Fifteen.
Yeah, so we are on, uh, number five, Title Fifteen amendments. This is a public hearing. Dave, do you want to go ahead and tell us what this is about?
Yeah.
And, uh, hit the high points.
The high points are that these changes are proposed for four different reasons. First of all, we have a need to reconcile some language that we have in our two newest zones, the R four and R five zone, with language that we have in the master plan development section of Title Fifteen. Um, that's the result of, um, some rushed work, I would say, that was done when those zones were created within the last three and four years. Um, and us just simply to date, having not taken the time to make those reconciliations. So, this would make the R four and R five zoning districts sync much better with the language that we have in our other residential zoning districts and would clarify the role that master plan developments play as a tool that developers would use when they develop properties in the R four zone. So, that's the most significant uh, reason for the changes that are here before you tonight. Um, also, there are changes that simply clarify what the city's standards and rules are. Um, we don't ever wanna be vague or ambiguous or anything like that at all. Um, or maybe to leave, um, leave language short of just being as explicit as we want it to be. Um, you can see that, for example, um, clarifying that with, um, some standards that we have in the residential zoning table, um, uh, getting rid of some carryover language, where we talk about base density in different zones to clarify, um, or sorry, I should rather say to have uh, language match what our practice has been for quite some time, which is that, uh, we actually prescribe what the maximum density is for different zones, just to use that as one example of how we're trying to clarify things and not only, uh, I guess to provide clarification, but also to make sure that the language in the code, um, as explicitly as we possibly can matches what our practices have been now for a number of years. Um, that also involves adding, uh, a definition to the code. Um, and then the last, uh, addition that we're proposing to make here, which in my mind, this is really the only substantive change that we have, uh, by way of adding, um, new regulation. It's the little bit of verbiage that we have, a paragraph about the responsibility that developers would have in master plan developments to install street trees. Um, which I think seeks up with action that you've taken uh, with projects that you've approved and that's the intent, there was some question by the council as to whether it's appropriate to require them on a project-by-project basis. The intent here is to make it clear that, uh, it simply is the city's expectation that that happened. Uh, with all master plan developments, not all subdivisions, but all master plan developments. That's my high-level description. And, uh, like Commissioner Ernest said, uh, he was in our office earlier this week, we had a chance to talk a little bit about changes and, um, I'd be happy to make any edits or things like that.
Why ma- why only master plan developments and not subdivisions? Just curious.
Um, I think that's the best way to put our toe more in the water than it is right now. That's really, it's like a baby step.
Right, got you.
As I went through them, I didn't see anything that, uh, that was worrisome in my view and it might be because I didn't understand all of the changes for whatever reason, but I think I did, I think I understood them all. Uh, there were just a few things there that I think that, uh, are good for someone who's interested in building in the city, and they request a copy of our rules and regulations, and they read through this, and if they have questions, then, uh, they're not getting hit flush in the face when they come to meet with you, they can look at them and know about what you're going to request of them, so I, I think I support all of them. Uh, Joseph, as you went through them, was there anything that Dave says that you guys looked at them, was there two or three things or something?
Yeah, I actually have a couple.
Okay, let's-
Do we have a public hearing, or go now?
Yeah, it, uh, let's, let's first, uh, let's first go ahead, and we'll go into public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to come forward at this time, speak to the public?
About the Title Fifteen amendments.
Damn, you guys, alright, so we're out of public hearing.
Okay, Dave.
And we'll go back to our, our comments and questions.
What did we conclude about my concern about the twelve contiguous, as an example, the twelve gross contiguous residential acres?
Oh.
It not, what if, what if there's an, an adjacent and a budding development that is a s- of a similar product type of density, and I wanna come in with a five acre MPD that's pretty similar? I think your concern was they'll have less amenities, potentially. But I think I'm, yeah, I, I'm hung up on that a little bit. Were there other concerns? Cause I'm forgetting some of your other ones, we talked about a lot.
That was the main one, I think that's the one, the one thing that you and I didn't necessarily see eye to eye on.
It was notable.
Yeah. It was awkward. I didn't feel like it was awkward.
Okay, Dave, flesh that out a little more.
So, I'm concerned, so what my concern is, on these, on these portions that require that there's a minimum number of acres for you to apply for that zone MPD, there's a minimum number of acres. What I'm concerned about is, is if, as a city, we've, we, we know, like, for instance, hypothet- we know next to the freeway, that's a great spot for, uh, typically a great spot for multifamily, it's near what we hope to be the retail, well, we already have, was hypothetical, we have a twenty acre MPD of apartments, so it's, it's, it's just a great spot in the city, and there's only two or three spots in the city that we love for that product type, and someone comes forth with a seven acre R four MPD, that's beautiful, and it's, that's their project, well, we can't even entertain it, cause it's not twelve acres. And I don't like that.
What's the reason for twelve versus another number?
Let me start there, um-
Scriptural, twelve, twelve, do you see that number a lot?
Three, you have three?
The R four zone, we started talking about something like the R four zone, I wanna say in about two thousand and fifteen, and I can't remember exactly when it got adopted, but it took a couple of years to go from the idea that the city would never approve a development with more than twelve homes per acre, to having a zone on the books which originally allowed for eighteen units to the acre, the R four zone. Um, I was a fairly big proponent of creating that zone, um, for lots of different reasons that probably don't matter a lot now, but, um, uh, part of what, uh, got me to the point of feeling really comfortable talking with the planning commission and city council about it, uh, were conversations that I had had repeatedly over several years with what I felt were very, very capable development groups, um, that really understood what a contemporary apartment development, um, looks like, how it works, and what it takes to make them be successful as a high-end type of, uh, uh, project. High-end meaning good design, uh, a vast array of amenities, things like swimming pools, clubhouses.
And not to cut you off, I remember something you said, at this point, twelve acres, and I'm familiar enough with the R four's code, twelve acres puts enough units that it's a clubhouse, it's a pool, it's, there's a substantial number of amenities that are required.
Two hundred. Two hundred units was the magic number, that I heard repeated, it was funny, different developers would all use that in their conversations with me, as they talked about what they'd like to do in Spanish Forka project of at least two hundred units, that's how big it would have to be for us to be able to do what we think is a nice job, so then it was a matter of, the density is eighteen,
I remember.
How many acres would it need to get to that two hundred threshold or something like that?
I remember how you got past this.
Little bit of science that we put to that threshold, with the idea that we did not necessarily, so this is kind of the flip side as well, we did not want, um, and I think this is really an extreme example, that probably doesn't actually compare, but over a lot of years, we've had areas in Spanish Fork that developed fourplex to fourplex to fourplex to fourplex.
Yeah.
Um, and that was not at all what the creation of the R four zone was intended to result in. So that project scale really mattered then quite a bit, now that being said, I'm not sure necessarily that twelve was the magic number, I'm not sure that two hundred homes per project is always the magic number, but that is absolutely where that came from.
That makes sense.
You know, and I remember how Dave made me feel a little bit better about the wording. Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm gonna, it was along the lines of, um, the code is written in a way to be general to apply to most circumstances, which in this case it does, and he convinced me that he would not turn a developer away who was in the scenario where I just talked about, which is, dang it, that's like one of the two places in the city that we, that that makes sense, that multi-family makes sense, he wouldn't turn them away, we would figure out, we would potentially do a text amendment, we would, we'd figure it out.
So should somebody fail to have twelve acres and still have a development that they wanted to pursue, allowing them to propose a text amendment?
It looked like a good quality development.
Allowing everybody has a right to do that.
To the community, right.
Then it could go through the process, and that could be the impetus for considering a change.
Our part is we have to remember that.
But there would be, there would be a process, but it, but there would definitely be, uh, some criteria that would even allow that process to start.
That criteria exists.
Either the plan or the conception of how it would be, and I'm all, I'm all for that, but we have to have some starting spot.
That's been- The idea that you would be open-minded to things, um, I've been here quite a while, and that has always been the culture of planning commissions and councils that we've worked with, people don't always have their proposals approved, but, um, there's always been an open-minded consideration of, of, uh, ideas, and I think they get evaluated on their merit, and if it makes sense.
A lot of cities aren't like that, though.
And I appreciate that, and Joseph-
A lot of cities, it's, it's in the code, I, I don't know what to do, what you're saying isn't, doesn't, the code doesn't say that, uh, I, I can't even help you. I, I don't even know how to function without it complying with the code.
And occasionally, that's the result of very explicit direction staff gets from elected officials and things like that, so, you know, I mean, I, I understand why other communities down to the lowest person on the totem pole operate the way they do sometimes, I'm really glad that historically we have not been that way.
So you'll change that to five? Next, next item.
We will do whatever the city council tells us to do, for sure.
Alright, so that was one of my concerns, maybe.
Any other concerns about, uh, these?
Yes, sir.
Okay, next.
I had one more.
Okay.
Uh, D three. A two-car garage for each single family residence is required, I'm just gonna read through it, townhomes and multifamily units must have one attached or detached garage per unit, developments shall include no less than zero point five guest parking spaces per home, developments that include with each home a two-car garage and driveway, driveway space for two vehicles shall not be required to provide additional guest parking. When re- when required, at least one space for guest parking shall be located within two hundred feet of each home. Alright, walk me through this, cause it just said that point five guest spaces are required per unit, per home, within two hundred feet, and now it's telling me at least one space for guest parking shall be located within two hundred feet of each home, when it's just told me only half a space is required, and now I'm starting to look at this, define home. Is it a single-family home? Because we're using the word multifamily home, we're using the word, uh, townhome, we're using the word single-family residence, we're using-
Home as any domicile.
Ah, that's what I thought, that's what I thought, which makes it a little, when required, which it's never required, at least one space-
But we do require guest parking.
But not one space.
So here's, and I appreciate, right, you're just saying the math doesn't add up.
Yeah.
I think we need to say to clarify on what.
In fact, because it doesn't add up, it makes you question what the rest meant.
I would say that, that, this is, I think, a better way to articulate the intent. When guest parking is required, comma, at least one space for guest parking shall be located within two hundred feet of every home. So, the need to provide guest parking can be done away with if people have a two-car garage and a driveway that accommodates two cars in their project. So in that case, there's no need to provide guest parking, but otherwise, guest parking is required, and the idea is simply that we don't want guest parking located, you know, um, dysfunctional distance from, from homes.
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying, but it, I could, I could easily interpret this sen- this sentence to mean that if guest parking is required, just if, period, even if it's half, then I have to provide one guest space within two hundred feet of the home.
So how about this, what if we get rid of the one space and just say guest parking? When required, guest parking shall be located within two hundred feet of each home.
There you go. Cause you do have an instance where you do allow point five, so that you set the four point five in an instance, and you say blanket statement, everyone should have the one space, so I, I could see that.
This is the advantage and problem with having an attorney on the commission, um, because the other side of this is then that the way that would read, all guest parking, all guest parking has to be within two hundred feet, which is not the intent either.
I see only positives here. There you go.
Some part of the guest parking has to be within two hundred feet.
And, and frankly, I prefer it be very clear, right, we just, the plain meaning of the text, cause I mean, Wall agrees, I mean, if you have a citizen who can interpret it, who can reasonably interpret it a, a way, that way is more, is more, uh, binding than the way the city meant it.
So what if we just say required guest parking shall be located within two hundred feet of each home?
I just, I think, you, you work on it.
I think that sounds good.
Say it again.
Required guest parking shall be located within two hundred feet of each home.
Yeah, okay.
Done.
Walter, sorry, I'm not dragging you into this because-
Why not? Does, I, I want to drag Walter in.
Catching a total, this is not fair.
I wanna drag Walter in, but-
But one thing I'm seeing here is that we are, um, increasing the amount of parking from point two five to point five in number five. So number five, minimum parking shall include two and one-half spaces for each unit in the development. Enclosed garages shall be provided for sixty percent of the units, and zero point five spaces for each unit shall be made available for guest parking.
Which page are you on, Sean, I'm seeing?
Yeah, where are you reading that?
Number five, on, uh, page six. Am I in a totally different?
Which, uh, zone is this?
Uh, it says R four, what zone were you in?
I was in the first, in the opener.
You're in the master plan zone.
Yeah, I was in the master plan zone.
And I was in R four.
Sixty percent, it said zero point five, so.
Yeah.
But it's still two point five, right?
The, the total parking required is still two point five, but we would require that, uh, a full half a space per home be available for guest parking.
Awesome.
Guest parking being simply parking that has not been assigned
To.
expressly to a particular resident.
And it's still in the code that we can't count, they cannot count off-street parking, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Good.
Oh, and then-
So do we say off-street explicitly somewhere? Or the?
We do.
We do, okay. There's like, yeah, three here.
And then, um-
Are we good with, uh, ju- on that same one for the R four? About the minimum finished, uh, living space shall be provided, and they added number seven, usable space on balconies for stacked flats may count toward the minimum living space requirement.
I'm good with that.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I'm good with that, too.
Matches our practice to date, and, um, to some degree, that's the result of the conversation we had last month.
Yeah.
Um-
Sorry.
Occasionally, that might be a reason for somebody to do some more functional balcony space and that type of a thing.
Yep.
I think it's an easy give.
Yeah.
Page seven, I just noticed this, so it was-
Missing a N.
Missing a T H A N, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, got it, sorry, that's-
Okay.
Not surprised you found it.
It was in red, so I remembered.
It helps, right?
Yep. That's all I had.
I will entertain a motion.
Did we have a public hearing already? We did.
Yeah, we did.
I move that we recommend the proposed amendments to various zoning requirements to the city council for Title Fifteen.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passed. Alright, we can move on.
Wait, what?
You never mind, doesn't matter.
Alright, we'll go to, uh, I guess this is, this, that was A, and this is B, septic tank regulations. A potential amendments to septic tank reg- regulations found in the city code. Anybody like to tackle that with the staff?
Staff recommends it be approved.
I, I'll make a motion. Is this a public hearing, sorry, uh, is it a public hearing?
There is, uh, this is, uh, a public hearing, so we'll go into public hearing, is there anyone from the public who would like to discuss this? Seeing none, we're out of public hearing, any discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move the planning commission recommend approval of the septic tank regulations as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, if any, that passes. Number six, the general plan amendment, another public hearing, uh, this is the transportation master plan, which was interesting to me, and, uh, who would like to talk about that, or is it pretty well self-explanatory?
Do you wanna hear about it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I did, I did the, I did the reading, and I'm ready to make a motion, Commissioner.
I, I-
I did the reading, and I'm ready to make a motion.
But I wanna hear about it.
My entire hours to present.
Yeah, if Dave's chomping at the bit, I definitely am. Um, traffic on Main Street's not good, and in twenty fifty, even with an air change, it's even more not good. About the same, uh, more traffic, but anyway, it, it's just not great, and so we asked the consultant to come up with solutions, and they said, unless you wanna go to five lanes on Main Street, or s- sorry, seven lanes, so three in each way.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't have space for that, you're gonna knock down the lanes?
Well, y- yep, it would look like state street norm, it would be like, it'd take away everything all the way up to the buildings, you might have to buy building, anyway, just not viable, right? So one of the options we came up with, we had to model it, and then we had to, we did a feasibility study, is can we run, um, road, a road up Third East? It's on Fourth East right there technically, and then run it here, and then connect up to Third East that goes all the way basically up to, almost to Costco. And so we did a feasibility study, they say, okay, does that lessen traffic on Main Street? And does it, uh, make people wanna use Third East more, and is the cost even in the ballpark of what's feasible? To get funding and do that, and it came back positive, so, this is a change that-
Good deal. So it is wet through there.
That's a job, right?
Yeah.
Construction can easily take care of that. So the roundabout, uh, is proposed already, right, or it's part of?
This one's already proposed, this would be added, this fixes a really bad intersection, there's, uh, ditch, the mill race, um, grave, grave issues, a couple of things, we had a consultant look at that two years ago, when any acres was being looked at. Um, so that's the change, and then making this more of a substantial road that will attract users.
And then the road going over to Volunteer Road, right, that's that intersection?
Yeah. This is in the works, there's kind of a, we'll call it a moratorium, but there's a cap on units, cause South Lane's not built for hundreds of units, so there's a cap, and so they're working to get this built.
Right, that's, that will happen in the near future.
As soon as the, the attorneys of the groups can work together.
Yes, okay, now, uh, the one- Yes, okay. Now, uh, the one that I wanted to ask about is the one that goes south. Well, first, on, on South Lane there, Southfield Lane that comes over. Uh, that is an interesting one right there, uh. Did that come back positive too?
Yeah, that, yeah.
That connects, that's the light on Arrowhead Trail, right?
That goes through to IFA all the way out to the freeway, yeah. So that one modeled out really well, and then South Lane would be closed at some point.
So it would be com- closed. If it is closed, we have a business there and about four homes, I think, isn't there?
Yep.
They would just, so you just close it at Main Street and that would be a dead-end road and.
Dead-end road until the houses and that property redevelops, and the road would eventually either transform into like a commercial local type road to. For businesses on either side of it, or it just goes away and you have a bigger box type area like this for commercial.
Where, where would that locate? Is it on the edge of the property where, or where the, uh, what's the name of our event center there?
River Bridge.
Yeah, that's really close to it, right?
Yep, well, it's a little south, we'll go to it right here.
It kinda is.
Something like that. So River Bridge is right here.
Yep.
So this.
So it is a little bit for, so, one of the questions I have. It's a general question for the river bottoms and the vision. Are we moving the goalpost a little bit by putting that road in? Would, would we, would we also move? That property right now isn't part of what we. What's his, what's it, uh, what's the master plan for that, uh, area between the two roads?
Go back here. Right here? Or which, which spot, John?
Well, where the, where the road's proposed, right there, all of the blue is. It, so it is within the Spanish Fork boundary now to be built.
Correct.
Okay, that answers my question. So right now, the feed yard of, of McKell's there is basically where we cut off now. With Vision and everything else.
Where's McKell with this in the conversation?
Right where the little, right.
I mean, like.
This, this thing here.
With Mr. McKell.
Yeah, this is their feed yard right here. And they have this property that comes down this way, and then they have, and then they have this that goes all the way over to the event center here. So this is one piece, this is one piece, and this is where the condos are going, which is McKell property as well.
There are multiple McKells there.
Multiple McKells, same, same family, two genera- or just one generation back, so.
I, I do know.
Good people. Okay, that was the question I had. Uh, oh, this one. Then the next one is, is that this road that comes over from this roundabout. Comes over here, this is Swenson Lane, right?
Yes.
Goes over to Len Swenson's, this is Len Swenson's place and his feed yard, and this is the Woolenzeen, right?
So that, like, third currently on the general plan, there's no proposed change to that?
No change to that, but this is a new road.
It's just north of South Lane.
Right.
Talking about changing, correct?
Yeah, it's just north of here we're talking about, so it's from this circle up to Third East. Just kinda classifying that as more of a main route as an option, I guess we're calling it, for Main Street, um, help there. And then adding the Volunteer connection over here, and then the roundabout here.
I guess part of the question that I have there in that case, and this is what I thought when I saw this, is if this comes and connects here. There really isn't anything here, uh, except one home, it's right there, that's, they're in here, right there. And Woolenzeen, he's mentioned that he wants to build a home on his property at some point in time, this is Len Leifson. He could build a home down there, he's got five and a quarter acres. This, uh, you know, in other words, what I'm saying is, is if this is all within the vision plan that does not get developed. Uh, is this road just part of MAG's plan? There, because they include.
If needed, here's a connection that models out well for the kind of a regional look. If there's no houses down there and we don't need it, it doesn't get built.
It won't go for a long time.
But I don't think for purposes of regional transportation planning that that is considered a regionally significant road.
We have someone here.
In order to be, um, any MAG maps that you see.
Well, we had, we had someone here from MAG, uh, a year or so ago that came in and said, this is where we're looking at. Different roads that would be on the east side of Spanish Fork and places, and the river bottoms had two, and it looks like they're. They're illustrated here, that, you know, this is what we're talking about, right there, right?
That one it is.
This one comes down off the hill and over here.
The twenty third, twenty-three hundred.
Exactly.
And this one, that is in the master plan to come over to this area. So there are a number of roads that are gonna go through here, and those are more just for transportation needs. Not for any other reason that would encourage, it, it's going to encourage development when a road goes through.
Well, um.
Unless the vision is in place and we stick to it.
Unless things change a lot in future decades, I don't really, well. Unless things change about how roads get built. Or development happens in the river bottoms, I don't see a lot of these roads ever getting constructed.
That's what I thought when they were proposed.
So wow.
That's a lot of money. If you lived, if this was in St. George, it would have been built five years ago. For some reason, that region down there, man, it gets the money. There's roads all over, all over Washington County, aren't there? Put her out through the sagebrush and there's nothing out there, and then it fills in. That's what I'm saying. This, this is going to have to, you know, well, but something that might change that is this property of BYU Dairy where, uh, DR Horton. Is an embroiled issue right now. You know, all of that goes in there, and then this eighty-eight hundred South and Powerhouse Road is woefully inadequate. And so then that means that that road is pretty important.
Yes, so that.
But these, I'm not so sure that they're all that important.
Exactly, so the more local roads that we wouldn't be able to get regional transportation funds to help build. Again, if the river bottoms develops, then the mechanism is in place to develop and build.
That's all, well.
Uh, we would never have the funds.
So, so that answers my question. I'm all, I, I'm all for what is proposed tonight. To, to complete these one, these that are in the river bottoms now around any acres. Southfield Road and all those through there, and I think it's a really good idea to bring that over and bring it into Third East. That's, or second, no, it is Third.
Yeah, Third East.
Yeah, Third East. That's a good idea. I mean, I like that.
Main thoroughfare for me, I try to avoid Main Street as possible.
We're, we're, we're working on removing needless stop signs and four-way stops through the blocks. But it's, it'll be a little process.
Well, is there any other, uh, questions or, or comments? If not, load up.
Okay, we're ready, Justin.
Sean, you got it.
Uh, I. A little public hearing.
Didn't we have a public hearing on that? Okay, we'll go into public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to, like to discuss this? Okay with that, that end? Okay. Then we'll go out of public hearing. And, uh, if there is no further, uh, questions or comments or discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the revision to the transportation master plan.
I second that.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Okay, we have a construction standards, and this is a, another, this is a last item, and it is a public hearing. Oh no, it's not the last.
I've been really excited about this all day.
Have you been really chomping at the bit?
Oh, yeah. I remember the last time I brought standards, which was last time, I think, so.
I think that we ought to let Mike take care of this.
Todd isn't quite here to.
John, just open it to public.
Alright. Did everyone do their reading? Are we good to move on?
I did my reading.
You know what, I, I, I guess I'm boring as heck, but I did go through it. I can't say I read every word, but I did.
I went through it.
I went through it.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Like a good boy scout, I did my reading.
Good man. So. You want?
I'm here to answer questions.
You wanna give us any, do you see any points of contention in what has been changed or what is proposed?
No, if you guys didn't.
I didn't.
I didn't.
I really didn't.
I thought it was straightforward and, and had, uh, uh, I mean, it was more clear than. Well, I don't know exactly what the, what it was before, because I didn't read it before. But I thought that what is written now is, is very clear, and I can support that.
By far the best proposal for construction standards that we've seen in two thousand and fifteen.
Is it?
Yeah.
Cause it's the only ones you saw.
By far.
I move we open up to public hearing.
Alright, we'll have a, so we will open it to public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to spo- speak for or against this, or have a discussion? Uh, seeing none, we will go out of public hearing. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I move that the planning commission recommends approval of the construction standards as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That, that motion passes. Last thing on the agenda is nine other business, and that is the parking standards, which everyone is excited to talk about. Dave.
I know I am.
Thank you. Jackson Dilly, you guys have met him, I think. He's an intern in our office. He's from Arizona, so there's a good chance you'll never see him without a winter coat on, regardless of where he is. Month, season, or anything.
And well-deserved in the last couple of weeks.
He, uh, both because of the conversation we had last month and previous conversations, has done the research that we provided in the memo that you have. He's prepared to talk about that tonight. Um, he'll be back next month, he can talk about it as well. I don't wanna steal this thunder at all. Um, but, uh, it's late and you're missing two colleagues. Um, he'd be happy to present, kind of some of the, the findings that are the result of his research. And to maybe talk about some things that we could study further going forward, is how I'd put it. Um, basically saying, you wanna talk about that, that tonight, or do you want us to wait until March?
Jackson, would you cry if we wait till March?
So does it time. I'll still be here.
And then I'll read this ahead of time since you get, I didn't get it until.
Cause we just got this.
We were eating Jimmy Tore.
That's true.
Exactly, yeah.
Cause I, I will read it ahead of meeting.
Yeah.
Do we need to move to continue?
No, no, it's just, uh, discussion items, so we'll just.
Okay, we will continue that. How's that?
So we are, it is with the intent of changing our parking requirements, that's the direction we're going.
Okay, we will continue. Item number, uh, nine, parking standards. Is there any further discussion or comments this evening?
Not from staff.
Anything from the commission?
I move that we dismiss the meeting, that we.
We have a, we have a motion.
Second.
A second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have adjourned, thank you.